Mr. Crockett? Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Mr. Loizell?
Here.
Mr. Massisso? Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Richard? Mr. Stark?
Here.
Okay. On stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a couple of housekeeping things. We have four people on the board tonight present. If one more person comes, they'll be active. However, if a tie vote is a... Means the decision will not go in your favor. So you need at least three people to actually have affirmative votes. So you're aware of that. And also, the schedule's long, and at 10:30 we may not... At 10:30, that would be the last appeal. And so I want to warn you that you may end up having to come back next month. But we'll do the best we can to move it along. And if people can talk relatively quickly, that would be respectful of the people behind them. And why don't we jump into approval of the minutes for October 9th, 2013?
So much. Second is...
Discussion. Is it in all favor? It's unanimous? Thank you very much. We'll jump into appeal number 2509. It's an administrative appeal by Jeffrey and Lisa Shaw. 15 Maple Avenue, assesses map U-47 parcel 85 against the decision of the code enforcement officers. Notice of violation for the vehicle repair business in the R2 zone. And with us today, we have attorney Sauce here, and he's just going to give us a little bit of an overview and be here as needed.
Thank you, guys. My first time being here in person, so nice to meet you guys. Phil Sauce here, one of the town attorneys for Scarborough from Bernstein Shore. And I'm just here for this first appeal. This is an administrative appeal. We're going to review the decision of the code enforcement office, and that's what we call an appellate review. So you're going to review the decision to see if he was in error in his decision and the evidence that he's going to put forward that he made his decision on, or the office, I should say, made the decision on. I would recommend, and the chair has just said that the way you proceed is let the appellate go first and sort of make their case, make their arguments against the notice of violation and why it's an error, and then allow the code office to come forward and present the evidence that they used to come up with their decision. And then you would deliberate on that. Allow a public hearing, I should say, next, that people who wanted to speak on this other than the appellate and the code office, and then deliberate to see if the code office was in error based on the evidence that's in the record.
Thank you. Any questions for attorney at this time? Okay. So do we have Mr. and Mrs. Shaw here? Jeffrey and Lisa Shaw? Great. Could you do me a favor and stand up by the microphone? Take your... State your name and address, and we'll go from there.
Hi. My name is Lisa Shaw. 15 Maple Ave, Scarborough.
Okay. And if you'd like to explain what the circumstances are that bring you here today, we'll go from there. We'll help you out as we go along.
Yeah. We were cited for the violations, and I feel that they're unjust. We were told by Tom Rainsborough that we were allowed to have two vehicles, unregistered, on our property, and we could work inside the garage. And I don't understand what all this is about. My nephew moved out in July, the middle of July. There was no activity at all at the house until he returned for a family wedding and cleaned up the... What was left over at the house in the garage. On, I think it was October 4th, everything was gone. So I'm not quite sure.
And when did you receive the notice of violation?
When did we receive it? On the 20th, I think, of September.
20th of September. And you said that he was already gone after... Before that?
He was... He moved out in July. July 20th... 19th or 20th. It was either Friday or Saturday, late, early morning. He moved. Left two cars behind. One was going to be put together, and that's what they came back to do.
Okay. Now, I'm showing that notice of violation took place June 11th. Is that more accurate, or is there a different one?
That's not the one we were... We were cited on the 19th... 20th of September.
All right. You let the board ask any questions that they'd like to ask?
Can you run through the dates again?
I'm not really positive on all the dates. I do know when my nephew moved out. I don't know when the code officer was at the house. I don't know the dates on those.
So the vehicles in question are your nephew's vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. And he left them behind when he left sometime in, looks like July or...
Yes.
July 19th or 20th?
Yeah.
And you got the notice of violation when, as best you can recall?
September 20th.
Okay.
They had come back for a family wedding on, like, the 10th of September and were gone by the 4th of October. They were gone before the 4th, I think.
Yeah. What's confusing, ma'am, is the paperwork we have says June 11th, 13. It was delivered by postal carrier to Jeffrey Shaw, and it was certified mail. So is there a possibility we're missing something on the date issue?
Or is this a different violation that you're talking about?
It's probably all the same. They probably gave us notice, but I'm not quite positive on which one you're talking about. The one I have is September 20th.
Okay. While we do this, let's have Mr. Rainsborough get up and explain the circumstances the town is looking at, and we'll go from there, okay? So you can make yourself comfortable. We'll probably be calling you up in a minute or two. Thanks.
I'm Brian Longstaff. I'm the zoning administrator for the town of Scarborough. This is Tom Rainsborough. He's our chief code enforcement officer for the town of Scarborough. To answer your question or your confusion over the notices of violation, there were two notices of violation issued, one in June and one in September. So if you file through your packet under the packet that has the heading C, that's the second notice of violation. That's the September 20th notice, and that's the one that Mrs. Shaw is appealing.
Okay. So she's appealing the second notice, not the first?
Yeah.
Okay.
So really briefly, this whole case started back in October of 2012 and maybe a little bit before then. Tom Rainsborough will fill you in on any prior activities. But this started in October 2012, and in your packet, the first exhibit that I gave you was A, and that was an early letter dated February 20th, 2013, to Mr. and Mrs. Shaw from Sergeant John O'Malley of the Scarborough Police Department. And it kind of... You can read through it. It basically cites that there was noise violations. They answered more than 15 complaints at the house between October and February. Moving on to exhibit B, that was the first notice of violation dated June 11th. You can see the violations that we cited them for. You can see the return receipt for that notice. There's also an email from John O'Malley to Tom Rainsborough mentioning more complaints at the residence, and also, I've included the evidence that the police department had gathered over that time, showing phone numbers that led back to the nephew, Mr. Matthew, that was staying with the Shaws at that time, and all of the listings on Craigslist where he was selling parts and/or vehicles. And there are photos at the back of that packet that show the conditions at the residence at that time. Several vehicles in the yard, some dismantled, cars up on blocks or jacks, and parts stored outside at the garage. Then the third packet that I gave you was labeled exhibit C. That was the second notice of violation in September 20th, and I'll back up just a second. After the first notice was issued, that's when, as Ms. Shaw, I think, indicated, nephew relocated for a period of time, and the activity seemed to cease. The complaints stopped coming to the code enforcement office for a few weeks. And then they started up again, I think, in sometime in mid-August or late August. And so we started to collect evidence again. So we go to exhibit C, and you can see the emails that took place between our department and Sergeant O'Malley. You can see a report from Jamie Higgins, Police Department, of the conditions that he cited on or around September 16th. We also have in that packet a Craigslist ad for an Audi S4. Follow this. You'll note that the phone numbers at the bottom of that ad, 207 with 415 spelled out, 4405, that's a tactic that is often used to prevent somebody from tracing that number back to an individual. The ad is for an Audi S4. Then you can see the pictures of the Audi S4 posted on Craigslist or Instagram. I'm not sure which vehicle that was, that the gentleman was using at that time. The photos that you see were off either Craigslist or Instagram... Facebook or Instagram. And then the final page that I provided you, just to give you a date, was 9/18/2013. A photo of some stolen parts outside the garage. We have additional photos in the file, which I'm happy to hand out if you want to. Just let me look at those. We need to have those back for the file.
And also...
Submit that... We're actually submitting this entire file as evidence in case... Because there's lots of different information in here, I didn't provide you in your packets. If there's any doubt, or if you have any questions and you wish to review more information, the whole file is here for inspection. The final exhibit that I gave you was labeled D, and that was simply Mrs. Shaw's informing us, her letter informing us that she did intend to appeal this notice. And so that gives you kind of the chronological date of how things occurred. We were back to the site several times, and again, as I say, prior to the final notice of violation. We did inspect the site from the windshield this week. There are none of those signs currently at the site. However, at the time we issued the notice, that was where the conditions. We saw vehicles. We saw parts. There was activity going on, and there were complaints coming into the office.
Quick clarification. On the pictures, there's a date, 9/18/2013. Is that the date that was developed? The date that was taken?
It was taken.
So those are the dates that were taken? And who took those pictures?
Tom.
You took those pictures? You certified those are the pictures you took inside the garage also?
Yep.
Why don't I open this up to the public? Does anybody from the public just speak on this issue? Okay. Seen none. I'll close the public section. Why don't we have... Mrs. Shaw, why don't we have you get up again if you'd like? Maybe we can ask you some questions, and maybe you can help clarify some of the inconsistencies. Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Okay. Now, have you seen these pictures that have just been brought forward to us? They're pictures of the garage?
Not... Probably not the ones that you just got handed, but...
Why don't you come forward? Let you take a look at them. Give you a second to get a feel of it.
No, I have not seen these. Yeah, these were taken outside to them moving out the first. So why is there a picture of the TJ?
Continue just through the pictures, and we'll talk about them as we go along. I just want you to see them all before we discuss them, otherwise you won't know what we're talking about. You'll notice the date on those is 9/9/17/2013. And I asked Mr. Rainsborough if he'd certified that that, in fact, was the date that he took those pictures.
Yes.
Now, he took them personally. He said he did. The confusing part... I'll just get back on the microphone if you wouldn't mind. So the confusing part is you'd said in July, right, that most of this was already been taken out? Your nephew had gone?
On July 20th, yes.
Okay. And... But these pictures are from September.
It was actually in the process of cleaning up.
I'm sorry. Could you take the microphone, sir? Just because we can't hear you. It has to be on the record.
He was... He was in the process of cleaning up, but he had left behind.
Okay.
That's actually what the activities were.
Could you state your name again? I know, Mr. Shaw, who you are, but we need it on the record.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem. We would know.
Anyway, the irony in all this is that he came back with the intention of cleaning up, because we still had a couple of cars in the yard, and some parts left over from his first trip there. So he... The old car, for instance, it was supposed to be taken, 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 and it wasn't taken. So it wasn't even addressed until he came back, and he was there to kind of push forward that this was needed. And, you know... And the black car was actually... They moved it into the garage because they were going to use that to take him back to Florida. So the... And the blue car was just a shell. It was never anything but a shell. And that was also... And there were parts in the garage, and I'm sure Tom will back me up on this. There were lots of parts still in the garage that needed to be removed. The cars in... Parts that ended up on the yard were... Ended up on the yard because those parts, they needed to get some room in the garage to start working on the car that was going to take him back to Florida. So basically, you know, it wasn't starting up again. They were cleaning up.
Okay. Board members, any questions for either the appellants or...
You got your first notice in February, I think it was, if I'm correct?
I'm sorry. What was that?
The first notice of violation was February or something along those lines in 2013?
The first notice from Tom. Yeah, I believe that's correct.
How would you describe the information that came in that notice? What did they tell you? Did they tell you what you were in violation of? Did they tell you why you were in violation and the effect of being in violation? What kind of information did they give you?
They basically told us, you know, that, yes, we were in violation, and they gave us some frameworks with which to work. And, you know, it was that we could have two cars there, and we could have, you know, working on one. And actually, at the point that the citation was cited, to the best of our knowledge, we were in complete compliance with what they had told us at that particular time.
Was it in writing, or was it all verbal?
It was verbal.
Okay. So they told you... I just want to clarify. So they told you... Excuse me for jumping in.
Sure.
They told you that you could do some automotive repairs for people inside your garage?
Yes.
Not for people.
Not for people, but...
The people who live around.
Yes. And all these cars were people that lived there. They owned those cars.
And what about all the sales? All the items that were up for sale on Craigslist and everything else?
You know, the only thing I know about Craigslist, to be honest with you, is that Craigslist is some site that a serial killer used to find victims. You know, I can't really tell you too much about it.
Yeah.
You know?
I have the same problem. No worries. But, you know, the challenge is, it appears that your nephew did know a lot about Craigslist.
Ah.
And here's... Just to maybe get to the chase. What I see when I look at this is a fairly sophisticated kid who is doing a business out of your garage, selling parts on the web.
Well, you know, to be honest with you, you know, one of the things is, I would imagine that there are lots of people doing business from inside their house, whether it's in the garage or not, and I'm sure one of the complainants is doing exactly that, working from their house.
Yeah. I don't know about that. We need to keep on this issue here, but what I'm getting at is there's a lot... We need something compelling to say, other than we're cleaning up from the violation that was done in June. Because realistically, at June's point, it would have been expected to have been stopped.
The one thing I was...
Right. I think when he came back, he thought that he would cut his losses and get rid of it if he put anything up on Craigslist.
Now, that's kind of a... The problem is, it does violate the rule, and that's what I see personally here.
But he didn't sell any of the stuff, because he packed it all up and took it with him.
Well, the problem is that...
He took a loss. He took a loss on a lot of that stuff.
Those pictures that we showed you show an awful lot of property.
They had a motor, outside of the car, and he was working on it.
Right.
And I don't know what he was seeing inside the garage, but my motorcycle was...
Other board members, questions, comments, or from our attorney, staff attorney? Any comments?
I have just one. You said the people that were living there. I thought it was just your nephew. How many people were living there?
My nephew and a friend.
A friend?
A friend of my... His.
The last picture in that package, I just think that has a picture of ID license of the guy who was taking it.
Yes. The black car, it was owned by the person that was staying with us.
Other comments from board or...
Yeah. I got a few more questions. The second notice of violation. Can you explain how that was delivered? What information they delivered? What violations they said you were in violation of? And how did they handle it?
That's when they came in.
The second violation. That was certified mail, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. It was certified mail.
And you received it?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And we, you know, as I said, about that time, that's when he shut down his operation. You know, he started moving a lot of the stuff off the yard, you know, getting as much of it moved someplace else. He also, you know, ended up leaving the state until the wedding, you know. In other words, he realized that, no, he could not do this here. So, you know, he wasn't going to be allowed, so...
And what actions did you take between those two points to correct what was going on?
Well, as I said, you know, he was... He cleaned up as much at that time as he could, and when he came back from the... For the wedding, it was his intent to clean up the rest of it, what hadn't been cleaned up before.
If you had to estimate the volume that was cleaned up between violation one and violation two?
Well, I would say all the stuff that was on the yard was removed from the yard. One tire was stored in the garage. There were a couple of engines there. And one tire was stored outside. So that was where we were after the first violation.
But loose parts were pretty much out of the yard? Or they were?
The parts were pretty much out of the yard, yes.
And what date was that again? I'm sorry?
Tom came and said, terrified everything was lost, and he was okay.
And do you remember the date that took place?
No, I do not.
Mr. Rainsborough, do you remember the date that you... Did you go in and say at some point it was complete and everything was cleaned up, or is it still outstanding?
I believe right after the... What was the early notice date?
Early notice was June 13th or June 15th.
Yeah. First violation, June 11th. First violation. Second violation, September 20th.
So after the June 11th, we went back to the site, met with Mr. Shaw and everything like that. Things had been cleaned up, moved outside. He had run... They told me that he'd run to the storage facility someplace, taken all the parts and everything from outside, you know, the motors, the racks, the frames, and, you know, most everything was gone at that point there. They had started some repairs on the building and everything. So at that point, he pretty much packed up, moved it all off to a storage facility. They still retained a couple of cars at the site, which is their right, and stuff, the unregistered vehicles and stuff. Thought he was supposed to discontinue all his work there. And then when we came back on... I think the photos indicate that I was there on the 18th.
Correct.
And that happened to be a night that I worked late, so I swung by on my way home about, it was after 7:00, I think. So then I came back, got Sergeant O'Malley to go over with me, and we went and met Mrs. Shaw and the other gentleman in the photo there. They were taking... They had taken a couple of engines out of the vehicles there. They were... And actually, these, you know, they were all during this. So we're probably talking about a multiple of maybe 15 to 18-plus cars over the period of the last couple of years. You know, it was more than just a hobby. They're very clever young guys, and I had encouraged them to go and, you know, get into business, and, you know, I think they could do very well. They're very clever. And... But at that night, you know, there was never any opportunity for anyone to present any titles or anything. They were... The way they were buying the cars, they were just buying them on Craigslist or something, bring them there, either pot them out or just shoot them through, you know, and retitle them, or whatever they were doing. I have no evidence or no positive feel for that. My feeling's there for that, but no positive evidence that they were redoing it and everything. But it indicates to me it was a recycling business and stuff. Certainly, the night was there that we took the photos of Mrs. Shaw. She claimed that one of the cars was hers, and the other car was the other gentleman in the picture there. And, you know, they were... They would just had to take the engine out because they had to fix it a little bit or something, and they were going to put it back in. And you can clearly see that the blue car is, you know, that was an underwater salvage or something. So it was, you know, it was clearly a parts car or something.
The one they said they were pulling the engine out and putting it back in, did they say what they were doing with it?
They were going to be for their personal transportation. It was the... It was their personal car, their ride car. And so it was always, well, I'm fixing that up for my cousin. I'm fixing that up for my friend. I'm doing this for my... So they... So it was a constantly a turnover of cars that were for friends and everything like that. It was just a hobby and stuff, so... But, you know, the listings on Craigslist, you know, talking to... I can't think of the name of the... Your nephew. Oh, Joe. Talking to Joe. Joe said, well, geez, I had the same problem with the ORNO code officer. He said he didn't like me doing this either. So, you know, it's clearly been a hobby of his for quite a long period of time, but it's certainly for something that he was... If it was his hobby, he was subsidizing it by the sale of the parts and getting the cars out. But clearly, you know, when you're just car after car after car, it's more than a hobby.
Do we have a date of the final? Has this case been closed out yet, or is it still racking up fees or...
No, they're here to appeal the decision... They're here to appeal our decision of the latest violation notice.
But as far as the... Was it 24th? I guess was when it was served. From the 24th, do we have an end date where they've met, or are they still in violation?
They're still in violation. They're appealing our decision to you as a board to see if we interpreted the rules correctly.
Okay. Well, let's say for the sake of discussion, when we come back and do agree with your decision, what is the end date? At what point do we... Right now, the way this reads, they're... If they're not in violation, I mean, if they are in violation, they're accruing fees of so much per day until at some point that they've cleared up that problem.
Right.
Have we established that date yet?
No, that hasn't been established yet because it's still in appeal.
Okay. Do we have any idea of what we're using for a benchmark for that at this point?
I'll sort of opine for a second. So there's no... I don't know of any... What the code office would do, because it's been an appeal, everything's been sort of stopped.
Okay.
But they would go out and determine, and it sounds like, you know, maybe it's not even in violation anymore, or maybe it is, but the code office would go find out if it is in violation after tonight, depending on how it goes. The appeal goes tonight.
So if we uphold the position of the code enforcement officer, what are they going to use for the end date for the per-day penalty?
They would determine that after... They would have to go out and make an independent judgment.[1769.83] It may be even before this hearing, if there was proof given to them, um, that, you know, everything was cleaned up by a date certain. But while it's been an appeal, uh, code has a seven day.
Right, that, that has not been decided.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and that's not what we're asking you to do.
Right.
We're just asking you to decide whether I interpreted the rules correctly or did not. You know, and, and, uh, you know, if, if you're going to uphold the Shaw's decision, uh, or you're going to uphold, uphold mine, so.
So you have no other evidence as of September eighteenth? That was the last time you've been to the property and seen violations that have been documented?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the disposition of the, of the June, uh, notice, that, they were in compliance at the, at, when you came back, so, so that was dropped?
They had satisf, they had satisfied us on that notice of violation, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, uh, we, we, we had come to a conclusion on, on that notice of violation. We were satisfied with the result, everything like that, and then when it started up again, see, the new violation was noticed.
Okay. Um, any other questions for the board? The, yes, sir?
Yeah, I'll just help to clarify that right now. What you're being asked to do tonight is just declare, just to decide whether the code office was in error when they made their decision, not whether there should be fines, whether it should be prosecuted or any of that. That's a, that's a sort of step two, if you will. If you notice that, uh, after the first violation, for example, there were no fines and there were no, uh, fines accrued and it wasn't brought as an enforcement action, that's a decision that will be made independently after, so it, it, that hasn't been made. All you're looking at tonight, when the code office sent the letter, the notice of violation, was he in error based on the information he had?
And this is around the second violation?
On the second violation, that's what's, what was appealed. Um, it doesn't mean that you're deciding that there's fines or anything like that under your ordinance. The town manager gets to decide whether to bring this to court for an enforcement action or not, so that will be part of a different discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to uphold the, uh, decision of the town enforcement, town code enforcement officers as described in the June, uh, September. Maybe fourth, fourth or September?
I think it's the twentieth.
September twentieth, notice of violation.
Second half.
Discussion of the motion.
Yeah, I think we ought to go on record as to what I, how we came to our opinions.
Yeah. Uh, Art?
I did.
Art, sorry. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's good. Art, you want to start with your position?
Yeah, I, I think with what was presented, um, it, it kind of upholds the decision of the code enforcement officer. Um, while the appellant's nephew was in and out, there was still going on, um, to uphold the, the decision.
I think the evidence that was, that was stated by the, the town showed that the, uh, people that have, of the Shaws that have appealed were clearly in violation at that time. So I think the evidence shows that, uh, that there was still activity going on at the home.
Yeah, I, I feel that the code enforcement was really rather restrained in their response and gave the, uh, guys with over, over fifteen calls, it seems that they gave the appellants more than ample time to have this, uh, this resolved.
Um, first of all, I think that you've been wronged by your nephew. Uh, whether you knew it or not, I think you abused your courtesy. And the reason I say that is because he acted knowingly about what he was doing, both apparently in Orno and Scarborough in the newer complaint. And even after, uh, in September, uh, there are ads still running, and when you look at three, uh, pieces of fenders in the backyard and a car up in the air, at some point, you lose the luxury of, uh, it just was a coincidence, or it just kind of happened. It, the, the preponderance of evidence is just overwhelming that he has been abusing your, your, and, and I'll be just blunt as that. But, and the problem is, it's your property and it's your responsibility. And, uh, at the end of the day, when you look at, uh, he had a business going in there. And so I have to, there's no, nothing that would allow me to be able to find any reason to, to overturn the decision. So with that, uh, the findings of fact and the conclusions, uh, this case is closed. Okay, sorry, it wasn't a better answer?
You should, um.
We start the vote.
Why, you should have a vote.
Yeah, we start the vote.
You give your reasons, but you should actually vote, vote on the motion.
I'm in favor of that motion. Yeah, nice, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ransmore.
Thank you, appreciate your help.
Ah, they're right there.
Okay, appeals, appeal number twenty-five oh five, it's a, uh, limited re, it'd be actually twenty-five oh three and twenty-five oh four, just so you know, has been asked by Mr. Bailey to postpone that to the next meeting, so please make a note that those have been requested by the appelle to, uh.
Which one was that?
Table, twenty, uh, twenty-five oh three and twenty-five oh four.
Thank you.
Okay, the next appeal is appeal number twenty-five oh five, it's a limited reduction of yard size appeal by Thomas and Karen Sullivan, owners of property at twenty-two Pondview Drive, assesses map R twenty-two parcel twenty-three B. Construct two car garage thirty-two feet from the front property line in the R two zone. And I just need to state for the record that, uh, uh, Mr. Hatum is actually one of my attorneys. And so whether or not the board feels it might be a, a conflict of interest, uh, these cases don't have anything to do with me. Uh, but, uh, I work with a lot of attorneys and he is one of the ones that I work with, that's for the record. Anybody have any concern with that?
I'm okay with the chair.
I'm with that. Uh, I also, I work, uh, with Peter on the Chamber of Commerce here in Scarborough. But I don't see that affecting this decision.
Okay, uh, so basically, just a, sort of affirmative position on it, can I have a motion to allow me to continue on this issue as, as a member?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'm in favor. I have your name, Mr., and I'd like a motion for Mr. Tillman to be able to stay on this as, uh, part of voting.
Again, I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'm in favor. Okay, great, thank you. Now let's come back to the appeal, I, Mr. Hatum, how are you?
Good, how are you? Uh, for the record, my name is Attorney Peter Hatum, and I'm representing, uh, Thomas and Karen Sullivan of twenty-two Pondview Drive in Scarborough. Um, the Sullivans are looking to put a, uh, two car garage on their property at twenty-two Pondview Drive. Presently, they don't, they don't have one at all. Uh, most of the houses on the street do have them, although most of them were constructed without them initially. Uh, the request is to reduce the required front yard setback from forty to thirty-two feet, uh, which is within the no more than ten feet allowed by the ordinance. Uh, to start, what I'd like to notice and, and, and point out to the board is, part of the reason, in fact, and most of the reason we're here is because Pondview Drive is a four rod road. It's not the town's standard fifty foot road, it's actually a sixty-six foot road. So it's actually, the roadway itself is too big, so when you measure the setbacks from the, uh, edge of the roadway, edge of the right of way, um, that's why we're, we have a situation where putting, putting the, the garage where it normally would be within, uh, the allowed setbacks is actually too close to the road. Uh, I did speak with the town, uh, initially about possibly discontinuing the eight foot section on each side of the road because, uh, frankly, it's kind of overkill, but that was, uh, uh, met with, uh, a negative feedback, so we decided to go with this, uh, request. In addition to the fact that the road is wider than the usual town road, even though it only serves twenty-two homes and is a, a, a dead end road, is, uh, because the leeching, the leach field that's in front of these, these, uh, Sullivan's home is, uh, twenty feet from the edge of where they want to put the garage. So in order to comply with the leach bed setback requirements and, uh, uh, the ideal place to put the garage in the front of the house, close enough to the road to make it economical, uh, is within the eight feet. It is only a problem because we have a wider than usual town road. Um, I, I cited in my submission, the zoning ordinance sections, uh, uh, section five, B five, uh, uh, one through five, the, uh, requirements for a limited reduction of yard size. Um, and, and I, I won't recite them again here, I'll just submit them as part of the record. Um, what we're looking to build is a simple, uh, truss attic roof with a standard, uh, six twelve pitch, eight foot walls. Uh, Pete Monahan has been in Scarborough building for over twenty-five years, and he's done dozens and dozens of these. We're looking to make the size of the garage that they're constructing match the existing house to aesthetically blend the clavoured that's there already, I'm sorry, yellow cedar clavoured. And, um, it's going to be constructed on a four, four foot frost wall with experienced excavators and a foundation subcontractor. Um, what we'd like to do is the board to grant this appeal and allow the Sullivans to construct the two car garage.
Thank you, Mr. Hatum. Um, we have one letter, uh, read into the record. Uh, this is from, uh, Frederick Esty. Uh, Brian Longstaff, zoning administrator, I'm writing in regards to my neighbors, Thomas and Karen Sullivan, request for reduction of front setback for the purpose of building a garage. I am the next door neighbor, twenty-six Pondview Drive, who will lose some of my view of the pond across the street when the project is completed. I would like to go on the record to say I hope the town approves their request and certainly have no problems with this. Thank you, Frederick Esty.
A strange letter.
Um, any phone calls?
No.
Want to open the public, anybody who wants to speak to this on the public record? I'll close this part of the public meeting, come back to the board with questions, comments, or motions.
What's the speed limit on this road?
Uh, I honestly have no idea, it's a.
Gotcha.
Is it thirty-five?
Thank you. Thirty-five? Thank you.
The, the orientation of the garage is to the side, though, it's not. It's to the front of, it's to the front of the roadway, but there is still plenty of space to pull out because we're not measuring from, the, the measurement is from the center line of the existing road. It's not paved, obviously, the entire sixty-six feet, so there is quite a bit of room to pull out and actually pull in. You're not pulling out into the road.
The twenty-five mile per hour answer worked to your advantage, so.
That's fine.
Um, is that, the shed is, uh, did I read that the shed is being replaced?
Yes.
Or, or remo, relocated?
Relocated.
Relocated on, on, into the envelope?
Right.
Um, I notice it's not aligned with the hammerhead, is there a reason for that, or just trying to leave it as it? Looks like you have a hammerhead in your driveway.
You, you need to step up and just identify yourself, no, that's fine, you can come up and.
You just don't, don't, don't touch this because it's electric, fine.
We love to have different people speak.
Okay, my name's Karen Sullivan, I live at twenty-two Pondview Drive. And I first, I don't even know what we were just saying.
Yeah, on the hammerhead, so why, why do you want to do the orientation?
Oh, the driveway? Okay, we're, we're going to dig that part of the driveway up and make a new driveway from the new garage, if we're allowed to do it.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know if there was a reason other than that.
No, that, that's going to be grass, hopefully.
Great, other questions from the board or motion?
Where is it that the, uh, that the shed is going to be moved to?
Um, maybe to where the driveway is now, or possibly the backyard. There's plenty of room for it somewhere else.
So it will stick out further towards the road, or it's going to be back?
Um, we haven't really decided yet, but I'd like to put it in the backyard.
I, I guess that I would recommend to you that you put it, yeah, further back than the garage, you don't want it closer to the road, because that's.
Right, no, it wouldn't be closer to the road.
Okay.
For sure.
It'll be in the building envelope?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, that's within the big setbacks, except for the.
Oh, yes.
Which, which means, which is, also echoes the board member's comment, that it will be behind the garage.
Good.
Yeah, possibly behind the house, even.
Okay. Mr. Longstaff, any data, sir?
Well, just to address that last point, even relocating the shed, they'd have a permit for that, and we'd be able to review the location that they choose, and it would have to be within the buildable envelope, so. And it also has to avoid the septic system disposal field, so. It'll help them choose a proper location for that.
For point of clarification, the twenty feet from building for a septic tank, uh, or a, uh, uh, leach field, is that a requirement of the new codes?
It's in the plumbing code.
Is, is that part of the new, the new codes for years ago?
It's been in the code for years.
Twenty feet from any?
It depends on whether it's a full foundation or a slab.
Okay.
The setback.
Um, good, any other questions, comments, or motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve appeal twenty-five oh five as presented.
Second.
Okay, second, um, this was a tie, so, and, uh, uh, any, any discussion of the motion?
I think it's pretty well clear.
I just appreciate you forward.
Circumstance.
Okay. So, oh, I'm sorry, you know something, I'm jumping the gun on this, I'm sorry. You know, I don't know why you did that, but let's go through it. It meets the requirements, so that's why it seems so easy, let's go through it. Uh, where do I go here? Let me actually, inside, where do I go? There we go. Uh, Mr. Hatum, I'll just walk through these with you if you don't mind. Uh, the existing building was existed prior to nineteen ninety-one?
Correct.
Uh, the request of reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or the occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties utilized in the zone?
Yes.
I'm assuming that's because it's reasonable to have a garage in Maine?
And, and just for the record, there's, in my submission, there was a specific line by line, uh, factual recitation as to why each one of those standards is implied. You can either read that, or I would offer that into the record.
We'll go into the record, but we typically put it on, on tape anyway, and I should have done that anyways, but, uh, due to the physical features of the lot and the location of the existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new bit structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements. And I think we figured out because of the septic system, really kind of limits what they can do.
Exactly. And again, the, uh, the size of the roadway, unusual for the.
That's interesting, you said it was a four yard, four rods?
Four rod road, sixty-six feet.
So a two rod road is what?
Thirty-three.
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 The more common one is a three rod road, which is forty-nine and a half, which is still a half a foot short from the town standard.
Interesting. Uh, let's see, the impact effect of the enlargement, expansion, and new building, its structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure that conforms to the yard size requirements. And you have that, uh, I'm going to, uh, well, I'll read this in, make it, the impacts and effects of the garage will not increase the impact of the neighborhood, the building will remain in, single family residents has all buildings in the neighborhood along with MARS two car garage, like those in many homes in the neighborhood. Five, the apartment has not commenced construction, and, uh, nothing's been done, and no permit's been issued.
That's correct, this was flagged when they were in the building.
And we'll let the rest stand on the record, and again, I apologize for jumping the gun, having read it earlier, it was an easier one. So let's go back to the motion for, uh, stream of the motion.
Motion to approve, uh, appeal twenty-five oh five as presented.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'll take, I have your name, thank you very much, thanks for catching that. Thank you, Mr. Hatum. Sullivan did a great job. I wasn't that bad, was I? Next appeal, the appeal number twenty-five oh six, practical difficulty variance appeal by Nat, uh, Zilka. Did I pronounce that properly?
Yeah.
If I take your mic, microphone, that would be, be helpful. Uh, two library lane, assesses map U nineteen parcel forty-four, to relocate the existing dwelling one foot from library lane and one foot from Seal Rock Drive in the R two zone. Uh, welcome, if you could state your name and address, we'll go from there.
Uh, my name's Trevor Watson, I work for Ida Investments, and we're, uh, working on behalf of Nat Zilka.
Okay.
Uh, so, the, um, do you want me to just go through the nature of the variance?
Why don't you give us an overview of what you're trying to accomplish, and then we'll, uh, go from there.
So the Zilkas would like to renovate the property, and, uh, currently, uh, fifteen, uh, fifteen percent does not exist on the property. And so they'd be limited, uh, in what they can do to sort of modernize that portion of the property, uh, portion of the structures not on the property. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to, you know, spend, uh, a lot of money renovating seventy-five percent of your property and still, uh, you know, modernizing seventy-five percent of your property and still leaving fifteen percent, uh, where you can just sort of do aesthetic renovations to it. So we're asking to, uh, move the structure, uh, plus or minus twelve feet to the south roughly, uh, to give it a, uh, to go from a, a negative eleven foot setback to a positive one foot setback on Seal Rock Drive. And then at library lane, go from a, uh, negative one foot setback to a positive one foot setback. Um, and just, uh, full disclosure, we've sort of gotten into the budget aspect of it and some recent events that have happened in, uh, the, you know, in that community. The, um, initially, this proposal was filled out to renovate the structure, and now the numbers are coming back, uh, the Zilkas. are coming back, the Zilkas would like the option to, uh, fully rebuild the structure to... So that nothing will be grandfathered in, there'd be a... Everything would be modernized, like safety, all those things. So, um, I think what we're most interested in, in the variance would be the one-foot setbacks, sort of, if that's clear.
Just a clarification. So the plans that are in here are...
It's still all relevant. The house will... The footprint will be reduced. The location of the house will be dislocation. The design of the house will be a very similar aesthetic. It's just that, you know, there's a staircase that's, you know, really steep. The costs of renovating exceed the cost of new construction and, um...
The only concern I have, and I think the board might... I'll let them speak on this issue, but there's a difference between raising the building and building a new one and moving a building. And it's unlikely that the board would approve a blind slate. And also, it's not fair to the neighbors...
Sure.
That they don't know that you're building a three-story versus a two-story versus a one-story. As a matter of fact, this only shows, um, one story, I believe, and I know this... I think it's a two-story home, but the drawings we showed from the O-one. So I guess my concern would be it's not as easy as it appears. Mr. Longstaff, do you want to weigh in on this or...
Well, I actually disagree. Again, there are the constraints... First off, the neighbors have the right to come in and inspect the record, but they haven't been sent all the information that you have in the first place. So they're not going to know one way or the other. They're either going to object to the setback, whether or not, basically, because the house is going to get moved or rebuilt in that spot. Because the building envelope is just so constrained, there's no possible way that they can put the building anywhere else on that lot but what they're proposing. As far as the size, you know, you can place conditions on the approval as to the square footage or the footprint of the building remaining as proposed, regardless of whether it's new construction or relocated construction. So I think you can place safeguards on the condition, should you decide to approve, that will satisfy that need. As to the height of the building, there, you know, I think they're going to propose a very similar building either way. And again, you can put restrictions on that or conditions on that as you see fit, as far as building height and how it is constructed. It is rather unusual for an applicant to change horses in the middle of the stream and that is your prerogative to decide whether or not you are comfortable with that. I'm just simply highlighting how you might consider doing that should you feel that the setbacks are appropriate, given the circumstances. And that's, I think, what Trevor is trying to emphasize here is what they're really concerned about is if we were to locate, relocate a building or build a building, would those setbacks be acceptable to the board? Would they meet the letter of the variance request and the criteria that you have to decide on? I would encourage the board to not get bogged down in the details because the codes, the building codes are going to basically handle that. Obviously, you can place conditions. It's not going to be a three-story building. It's not going to be, you know, this and that. But also, the codes will back that up. So we don't have a full set of plans yet anyway. I think the issue is if they were to try to make that building more conforming by putting it on the lot, squeezing it in to the lot so that it's meeting those setbacks, would that be acceptable in the board's eyes for any structure, but specifically a structure the size of this one and the same footprint?
May I add to that?
Go ahead.
My issue with that statement is two of the questions that we have to decide on is two and four. Granting the variance will not produce an undesirable change in character to the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonable detrimental effect on fair market value. I can't tell that without seeing what the design's going to look like. Again, that's my opinion. And the other one is that there's no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant. I can't tell that either without a design. So I feel like I'm limited in being able to answer those questions in the affirmative if I don't have that information. So I'm kind of flying by.
And those are valid points. Again, as far as the feasibility, the issue is relocating the structure to put a good foundation under it is kind of the same as, okay, if we tear it down, we build a foundation of the same size. The setbacks are still going to be the same request.
Right.
So as far as the feasibility, I think you can answer that one. I think it's a very good point on the other one.
Yeah, on character, I can't tell whether if it's one story, three stories, whether it's a gingerbread house, whether it's a modern design. I don't know if it matches the character of the neighborhood or not.
Could we do an approval for the size contingent upon a review by us just on the building itself?
I think that probably we could. I mean, again, I think it's... I think we probably... So to be blunt, I kind of agree with Mr. Longstaff, I think, on this one because it's... If this were a different set of circumstances and they were... This is actually improving the location, putting it more in the middle of the lot. And from what I see, that gives it into its full building envelope.
No.
No, it doesn't.
On the outside, other edges, no?
It's still going to be outside of the buildable envelope because the buildable envelope is a little sliver of ground that has... Currently has a... An accessory garage shed.
Excuse me. If you go to page four, I did a little diagram showing that the existing footprint of the structure cannot fit inside the current legal building envelope.
Okay, that's what that is? Okay. I guess my point is that I have no problem with the approval request. I don't think any of us probably have a problem with moving it onto the property.
Is the only question the one of the design aesthetic?
I would probably say the question for me is we typically allow these kind of things as long as the envelope stays the same size, roughly the same size. I think it's really... The buildings...
Yep. It'll be reduced. It'll go from thirteen point three to thirteen point one percent coverage.
So that's your plan is a thirteen point one percent coverage?
Yep.
So how that looks doesn't really bother me.
Is it two stories, do you believe?
It'll be two stories. If you go to the last page, there's a... There's some photographs of the existing structure and we're actually going to... We need to ma... I mean, I know, you know, I'm going on record, so it's my word here, but we need to maintain the aesthetic because, uh...
But you're not going to two and a half stories? You believe you're going to stay at two stories?
No. No, we will not change the, you know, short of plus or minus two feet because of ridge lines.
Okay.
We're not going to go to two and a half stories. We are going to... You can see in some of the photos here, in the upper right, the east side, and in the lower left, the north side, there is sort of a daylight because of the grade, which is one of the restrictions of the lot. There is sort of a availability of a daylight basement down there and we are planning on putting some windows in there, but we're not going to dramatically... We're going to maintain the grade around the property. So we're not going to turn that... We're not going to turn that into, you know, three stories along the roadside. What you see is what will remain. And, you know, the Zilkas have a guest house that we built a few years back and it needs to be in keeping with that. That guest house actually played off of this house and sort of a weird, you know, wag the dog tail, whatever the saying is. The, uh, the main, the primary residence is going to be playing off the guest house.
And the finishes and trends being relatively intact with...
Absolutely. Yes.
When was that guest house built?
I think it was two thousand and eight.
Well, you have one letter. This is from Jesse Abbott. Give Mr. Longstaff, we are the butter of Zilka property and wish to support the appeal. Mr. Zilka has been a good neighbor and his effort to move his house back into his lot is commendable. It appears that the other bulk and space requirements have been met after review of the application in your office today. Please allow Mr. Zilka to improve the non-conforming location of the existing house with documented additions and deletions. Thank you for consideration. Any phone calls or anything else? Let me open up the public. Anybody wish to speak to this in public? Close public hearing. So as the board, back to our points at hand.
May I add my thoughts?
Yeah.
Based on the little information you just gave us, I feel much more comfortable around the character. I mean, this does go on record. You know, it is part of the public record, so you're going to be held to it and I think you're going to follow it. So I'm comfortable with question two then. Thank you.
Mr. Zilka, any other comment?
Cut through the requirements.
Yeah. And you got a... Mr. Abbott's tough, so don't mess him up.
That's on record.
He knows it. He's a good guy. Okay. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. So if you could do me a favor and just answer these as we go through, that'd be great.
I actually printed out the wrong... It's kind of embarrassing. I printed out the wrong...
Did you do, um...
Sheet. So maybe I'll just answer it off the cuff?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So I want to...
Question again.
Want me to ask a question again?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood.
That's correct. The lot has unique restrictions. It's got three front yard setbacks. It's a long and skinny lot with a very small legal building envelope. Additionally, the terrain is such that there's really only one prominent location for a structure of the size to be built and that is almost entirely outside of the front... The legal building envelope. Thank you very much.
And the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use of fair market value of the budding properties. This is something that you brought up.
That's correct. We're going to be taking a non-conforming structure that is, you know, in a degree of non-conformity, I don't know if there is such a thing, but very non-conforming, and take the structure that currently exists off the property and wholly place it back on the strap... On the property. And additionally, we're going to further that lessening by relocate... Currently, there are decks on all sides of the house that are sort of wasteful as a lot of them aren't used because they're so close to the road and we're going to concentrate those decks back towards the central portion of the property.
And the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner?
That's correct.
And no other feasible alternatives available to the applicant except the variance?
Uh, there are no other feasible alternatives except for the variance.
And the logic being it's off somebody's property.
It's off its property. It doesn't fit. The structure, which is, you know, a standard size for that area itself, does not fit in the existing legal building envelope. So it's just, again, there's just further restrictions on this property.
And the granting of the variance will bring... Result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties?
That's correct. It'll be... We're, you know, we're improving the non-conformity of this nature and we're going to allow for more privacy both for the homeowners and for the neighbors.
And the granting of variance will not have an reasonably adverse effect on the natural environment?
The granting of this variance will not have an unreasonable adverse effect on the environment. It's going to conform to modern, you know, modern building codes, life safety issues, and sort of reduce maintenance requirements.
And you're not in the flood zone?
Not in the flood.
Not up there. Okay. Back to the board for questions, comments, or a motion.
When were you hoping to build or demolish?
This project, we're hoping to start in September of fourteen... Twenty-fourteen.
That's going to create a... Is that...
Yeah.
That's going to create a little bit of a problem.
Isn't it a year? Can we have a year?
Six months.
Is there a continuance option?
You can come back.
Can we apply?
You can get the permit, but you have to actually have started the work prior to the six-month period. Now, the definition of started the work is up to the code enforcement.
Does design work count?
No.
No. It's kind of at a policy that foundation work would have to begin. And in your case, should the applicant choose to demolish, demolish and removal would be a beginning of the work. Okay.
Now, you can come back in six months and ask for an extension of the appeal, but there's no guarantee that that'll be approved. But then you'll have your plans done, so that'll be positive. But I don't see any reasons why it wouldn't.
Okay.
But it might be a different board. Anything can happen.
Sure, I understand that. I think that's probably our best bet.
Just don't forget to come back because you don't want it to...
Six months.
Yeah. You don't want it to expire.
Or six months.
Prior, less than.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
And, um...
Make a motion?
Sure.
To approve appeal twenty-five oh six as presented?
Second. Discussion on motion?
Now, do we need to go on record for how we...
No.
Okay.
Hold it there. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
For six months or five months. I wouldn't start in July either.
You got that right.
The next appeal is appeal number twenty-five oh seven. It's a variance appeal by Susan Naden, Seventeen Shipwreck Road, such as map U one parcel seventy-seven to construct an additional fourteen feet from the property line and ten feet from the west side property line in the R-four zone. Welcome. If you could state your name and address, we'll go from there.
Thank you. My name is Susan Naden. We have a cottage at Seventeen Shipwreck Road to take a speech. And first of all, thank you all for serving on these boards. I know sometimes it's kind of a thankless job, but we appreciate it.
Sometimes?
The town pays us well. For the record, we don't get paid. If you get a bonus if you attend every meeting.
Probably not. Okay. So tell us what you're up to.
Okay. This is... I hope you've got my little packet. Okay, this is, I hope you've got my little packet. I don't know whether all of you received that or not, or...
All of us received.
All of you received it, okay. So, um, you've all looked through it, I'm sure, done your homework?
Yes, so you can kind of go through the, the, the Reader's Digest version. We all had the package for about two weeks.
Okay, all right. Um, I taught kindergarten, first grade, so if I get a little teacher read, (laughing). But you've all done your homework, so you're all set. Um, so this is at Seventeen Shipwreck Road. Um, we would like to, this started out as a project in about two thousand and ten, when, uh, we, my mother passed away in two thousand and eight, and so the property was handed down to me. Um, in two thousand and ten, after we started really evaluating the cottage itself, we knew that it needed some help. It had, was built in nineteen, in nineteen forty-eight, and since then, the, um, cement post pillars have settled and the hearth and the chimney have settled, and so it, it needs some help. And so we were thinking, well, you know, how do we go about this? What's the best thing to do? So, as I thought about the project, I came and talked with people here at, to town, and they said that probably DEP would be involved because we are right on the beach. So I went to Bill Bullitt at DEP and talked with him, and so told him our plan and what we'd like to do. And he said that before we started, we would have to have a survey done of the property. It would have to be an elevation and a boundary survey, which we had done. And, uh, when we all completed all of that, um, he told us that we could do the project. He came and visited the site and said everything looked fine as far as DEP was concerned, so we could go ahead with planning. So at that point, I had, um, some construction people come in for estimates and quotes, and had a building mover come in, and, um, they gave us quotes on what they thought it would cost to do it. So, at that point, um, um, on the telephone pole across the street, um, the surveyor, who was Steve Ross, I guess maybe some of you know him, uh, put a nail where the elevation would have to be, and it was going to be fourteen feet. So we have a nail across the street at fourteen feet on that telephone pole. Um, because we are close to the ocean, we have to go with their rules, and that's one of them. So it would have to, the cottage would have to be lifted to that height. And to make the improvements, apparently the, the rule is with SCARO and, and/or DEP, I don't know which, that you cannot do more than fifty percent of the value of the building in one year unless you make these other commitments for the project. So we have decided that that was what we liked to do, and looked at the neighbors and saw what they had done and thought, in, um, the fall of two thousand and ten, my cousin, who lived at Three Shipwreck Road, was diagnosed with cancer. She was very sick, so we decided we would stay as long as we could in our cottage, which is not winterized, so we stayed and helped her out, um, and decided, you know, this is really good. We really should winterize, or should work at, um, improving the cottage so we could stay longer in the year. So this appeal is about, um, wanting to first improve the cottage, and then, as we thought about it, we also would like to expand it. So, um, uh, do you have other, any other?
That's good for right now.
Okay.
Longstaff, anything to add, Ms. Adams?
Uh, no, I think I've got to do with staff comments on this project, um... Which I do not have coffee, uh...
It's been through several phases because of different information that we got.
Yeah.
And so when I started the project, Dave Brisk was here, so I was talking with Dave Brisk and Tom Rainsborough. Then Dave left, and there was a big gap in there, and people were trying to fill in for him, and I was given false information at one point, so that necessitated another survey. So we now have three different surveys. The first one, I was told, uh, we did not need any particular lines as far as high tides or anything, so Steve Ross did that. The second ser, the second time I came in, I was told by someone who was covering Queen, Dave Brisk, and now Brian, um, that I would have to have a line on the survey where the mean high water mark was and where it crossed our lot. Well, I got that information, and, um, that showed that we were inland from the seventy-five foot required setback, so that wasn't going to affect this project. So I went ahead and had, um, Hancock Lumber and their design team, and we were working together, so we had this plan, which I was ready to submit. And then the day that I was ready, no, no, a couple of weeks before I was going to submit it, I was running through, Brian had been hired by then, and I was running things by him, and he said, "I don't think it's mean high water. I think it's highest annual tide mark." So at that point, Steve Ross did some recalc, some calculations and extrapolated from his figures, and so then showed where the mean, showed where the highest annual tide line goes through our cottage, and that changed the plan completely. That meant that we were, the, the line crossed through the cottage, so we now have a thirty percent expansion limit at the front of the cottage, which meant that we had to move the whole plan toward the road. I tried to keep it as skinny as possible to make the, um, limited setback on the sideline, but that, because it squishes it, it has to go toward the road, so that's why it did not, no longer met the limited reduction of yard size on the roadside.
Thank you. Uh, why don't I, uh, go through, I'll read some, there are some letters here, and I'll open a public hearing in a minute. Uh, this is from, uh, Priscilla Reisming. Uh, in response to Appeal Number, oh, I'm sorry, in response to Appeal by Susan Naden, owner of the property at Seventeen Shipwreck Road assesses map U One Parcel Seventy Seven to construct a three hundred and nine square foot addition fourteen feet from the front property line and ten feet from the west side property line in the R Four Zone. I wish to notify the Board of Appeals that I have no objection to granting the variance. I am the owner of the property directly abutting the neighboring, uh, property to the west at Fifteen Shipwreck Road and would be directly impacted by the proposed addition. So she's on, uh, if you're facing the ocean, she's on the right-hand side?
If you're facing the ocean, she's on the right, yes.
She's on the right-hand side, okay. And the home is being moved over toward her?
Yes.
The next appeal, uh...
Actually, the addition, yes. The home is not being moved. DEP has told me that it has to stay on its same footprint.
So you're staying in the same footprint, but you're coming back, you, are you...
The same, the, the, the existing cottage, this was in two parts. The existing cottage has to stay on its same footprint, and the addition would be going toward her.
Okay. And this is the next one is, um, Ms. Longstaff, this is from Eric Smith. We're sending this message to you in response to the letter received regarding Appeal Number Twenty Five Oh Seven, Fifth Appeal, sent on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen from Carolyn Logan. On our behalf, it references, uh, the zoning appeal by Susan Naden of Seventeen Shipwreck Road at Higgins Beach. We are the owners of one, of Twelve Shipwreck Road, which is across the street from the property in question. We objected to the zoning variance requested particularly the side setback variance. The reason is simple. Prior to purchasing our house in two thousand and two, we checked into a liability of houses in front of us toward the beach to expand. This is extremely important to us. We were told that the houses would have to be built up, but not out due to zoning laws. Since the primary reason for our purchase was the view, and I understand that our view could not be blocked in the future, we went forward with the purchase of the house. If you look at the zoning map or visit Higgins Beach, you will notice the view from the front of our house includes, including inside the house is directly between the house in question and the neighboring house on the right, looking from our house. If the variance was accepted, it would forever block our view of the beach, for which we paid and continue to pay. The attached picture gives us perspective, uh, from the front of the house as well. Although our house is a second home, we are there full-time from June through the beginning of September and many other times during the year, along weekends, vacations, holidays, etc. It is also our intention at this time to retire at this house. We do not and have not ever, ever rented our home. Again, allowing the variance would, would forever block the view of our property, after being told it could never happen, and it would also reduce the resale value of our house. Please consider the economic and personal impacts, uh, the variance of Seventeen Shipwreck, uh, would have on us by increasing the footprint of their house. We are primarily party, uh, that is affected by the potential change. Please do not approve the variance and show the Eric and Lauren Smith, Twelve Shipwreck Road. And why not open up the public? Anybody who's just, this is from the public. Now, I'll close the public portion, back to the board. Uh, as far as some of the comments in the second letter, just for the record, uh, nobody's entitled to write to a view, so, um, that's not part of our equation here. You can look at the whole, as an overall view, the issue, based on the criteria that are required in, in the variance, but, uh, the truth is, I'm entitled to view, so...
Did I say something else, too?
Yes, ma'am, feel free.
Okay. Um, also, we knew that this letter was coming because my husband teaches at Southern Maine Community College. He was teaching a course last night there, and, uh, Eric Smith called him and said that there would be an email sent regarding the project. So, um, the only thing I could think of was there was a view problem. So this morning, after the snowstorm, I went over and took some pictures. Can you show me these?
Sure.
This might answer a few of these comments. These are, actually, I don't know how to do this, but...
If you want, just give me a hand to me, and I'll just kind of pass them down to the board.
And they are labeled underneath, so...
Okay, great.
I think...
Must be the schoolteacher in you.
(laughing).
While they're looking at that picture, let me ask a couple of quick questions if you have one.
Okay.
Um, so the reason you're here with the variance appeal is because you're in a, in a, um, shoreline zone, is that correct? One of the reasons that forces you into the variance. And so are you planning on raising the building and then starting, new, or are you moving the building?
We can't move it. We had, it has to be on its same footprint.
But they are gonna raise the building, so I, let me rephrase the question. They're lifting the building?
Right.
As opposed to raising the building?
Right.
Okay.
We are, R A I S, I N G, the building.
Okay. So you're lifting the building, getting up approximately, how many feet?
Be about three feet higher than it is now.
Three feet higher than it is now. And then, in the process, what you want to do is you want to do that expansion, uh, to the, the, the right, uh, looking at the water to the right, that's the other part.
It will be over the driveway, and that's one of the, the restrictions of the DEP, is that any new construction in our zone has to be over previously impervious surface. So that's why we can go over the driveway. And the covered porch. So the porch, the porch is to see there on the first, coming off.
I see the plan as it exists now, uh, do we have the, the plan as a proposed, other than this picture here? Think if you just flip, yeah, that's, going with the dots.
Oh, yes, that's, these are the three different surfaces. Here's the one here. So this is why we're still limited, um, in the green...
Actually, they won't be able to hear you on the microphone. So if you could do me a favor and just sort of, uh, just point, and we'll have your assistant kind of point out if he does it really well.
I actually have a copy in here, so I can see it. So in the green area there at the bottom, the green stripes, that is the area that we would be allowed to build in the way SCARO zoning is now. That would be permissible for SCARO zoning. The...
Except for the seventy-five foot setback?
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Um, then the brown dotted area is the area that the shoreline zoning has the thirty percent limit on. So we can only put thirty percent of our existing square footage in that area. That's why everything has to be moved back into the blue dotted area.
Okay.
Toward the road. Then the orange, uh, area there that is outlined is what the variance would cover. The variance would cover fourteen feet from Shipwreck Road and ten feet from the sideline.
Okay, so you're currently twenty-one and a half feet, give or take, from the sideline? Am I reading that right?
There are you now.
You're asking for another ten feet over?
Yes.
Eleven feet over?
Right, where the building is, right. And the new addition would be further from the road than our existing cottage is now. The existing cottage at the closest is ten point two-nine feet from the road, and it would be fourteen for the addition. So the addition would set back from what is already existing there.
Did you look at the option of squaring off the building?
Squaring off, which way?
On the right-hand upper corners, as opposed to jetting out?
Um, you mean putting it closer to the road?
Well, in essence, it would be closer to the road, but we're in a variance, so of all, you know, that, that allows you a lot of options in this scenario. I'm just kind of curious why, why you chose to go out instead of back?
Well, it would only go out eight point five feet, other than the stairs and landings. And that eight point five feet would be just about big enough to put in a table, a dining room table.
So, let me, let me kind of figure out the trigger here. The board can help, help me with this, too. The trigger that's requiring you to do the variance is because you want the expansion? Or is the trigger, the requirement being, is it being triggered because it's uninhabitable at this point? The parameters of a variance are pretty hard to meet, and they're, they're tough. They're designed to be tough. And so what I'm trying to get from you is, what's the motivating factor here and, and what's driving this? If this wasn't in a shoreline zone, my guess is you'd be coming for side setback, limited variation, limited reduction?
Right.
So the real, the motive here is to actually expand the building and at the same time upgrade it?
Right.
Why don't we go through the criteria?
Also, in your packet, I'm sure you saw the pictures of our cottage and neighbors' cottages. Those are in your packet, too. So it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. If anything, it's going to upgrade it.
This is a variance appeal, so I'm gonna read in the first one, and then you can kind of help us walk through this, okay?
Okay.
Uh, the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. Now, listen to that real carefully, because it's important you understand it. The landing question cannot yield, yield a reasonable return. The definition of that is actually in this book. Uh, it's not anymore, it used to be. Um, but it basically means that it actually has almost no value, which would be triggered by if the building was ready to fall apart, or it was, it was just really in tough shape, or whatever, and it, it just wasn't inhabitable. We tend to let that be enough of a reason to justify that. Um, but what, what is the, if we don't grant this variance, how do you answer that question in a way that we can say yes?
I think the only option, if this variance were not granted, would be to go to thirty-five feet, probably, and, uh, builders have told me that we could not do that, that, that the structure would not support three stories. So that was not an option.
Okay. Uh, the needs of the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. Never really answered that question, to be honest. It's because the property is limited.
Right.
Where is it, Peter? The granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of locality.
That's for sure. If you look in here at the other cottages on the street, um, I have pictures of Fifteen Shipwreck, which is where you got your letter from. Um, over the years, people have modernized and changed and improved and everything the cottage is. Most of them are on foundations, which we are not allowed to do, and I think that's a smart thing. Um, most of them are on foundations with basements. We do not have that option. So everything for us, for utilities, must be inside the cottage, including hot water heaters and, um, heating systems and plumbing, and everything else must be inside the cottage. So we, we don't have underneath as, as an option for that. Um, so Fifteen Shipwreck has, is on a foundation and is two stories. Nineteen Shipwreck is on a foundation, two stories. Five Shipwreck has been expanded out and up and has a foundation. Seven Shipwreck is the same thing. Um, the Smiths, who you got the letter from, is number twelve. There's a picture of their cottage here. They are, um, on a foundation. They have, we, I, when I took the pictures, we were counting shingles today, and we figured probably that cottage is about twenty-eight by twenty-four, two stories, and then there's an addition on the back that's probably fourteen by ten. So probably that's a fifteen hundred square foot, um, house, which is quite a bit different than ours. Um, Fourteen Shipwreck has, on a foundation, and has a basement, and is three stories. The one that's at Ten Shipwreck Road in your packet is, uh, it was currently under construction then, when I took that picture, but it's now finished and the people have moved in. Two Shipwreck Road, um, is, we call it the Shipwreck Hotel, it's so huge.
Okay, that's good enough. That gives me a good feel. Uh, the, the hardship is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner, you didn't create the hardship.
No.
Um, so at this point, let me come to the board. I'm sure they've got a lot of questions, and we'll go from there.
Oh, another thing regarding the character of the neighborhood, do have a picture in here, this one here, that shows the distance of the other houses from Shipwreck Road, and ours will be further back than most, even though the addition will be fourteen feet from the road line. That's further back than most of the others.
Uh, board members?
If you were to do nothing at this point, how does that affect the value of the property?
Of our?
Say, between now and twenty years from now?
Of our property?
Yeah.
Who's to say? I, I'm not sure. I...
I'm just asking your opinion.
Yeah. I would think, I would think it would be certainly less, because other ones around it are all improved. So if someone had a, a choice of buying ours, which is twenty by twenty essentially, where a big cottage, um, versus some of the others, I'm sure those would sell first for what people are looking for in that area. But that's not why I'm doing it.
Are there any safety issues with the, with the current building? Um, are foundations sinking, uh, wiring issues, that type?
And that's all included here in the fringe benefits?
I understand that, but we need it on the record.
Okay. Some of the fringe benefits that will come with this project are, I have substantial improvements will include a new DEP-approved engineered flow-through pier system stabilizing and elevating the cottage to at least the currently recommended level. A safe exit from the second floor directly to outside. Insulation to prevent heat escape and frozen pipes and drains. Completely new electrical wiring and conversion to a hundred amp circuit breaker service. Egress windows where necessary. A new chimney, rebuilt hearth and stove. Changes to extend the use of the cottage further into the shoulder season and conserve energy and improve doorways downstairs. Those are just some of the things.
Other, the current mechanical systems substandard to today's standards?
What do you consider mechanical?
Heating.
Heating, we have a small Renai heater, run on propane.
Your electrical systems to code today?
Uh, probably not. That's part of the improvement, is to go to a hundred amp service with a circuit breakers.
Structural foundation or you're on piers?
We are on piers, which is right. Which are deteriorating. Those have to be replaced.
So if this were not approved, at the very minimum, you would still need to replace the piers and probably the wiring and several other things? I'm sorry, so we, could you just take your name in the microphone, that'd be great. Again, we'll be able to hear you, I'm sure on the microphone. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it would, yeah, there are, there are issues with it. It was built in nineteen forty-eight and we, I've maintained it the best I can. But the hot, the wiring is still good, but it's the old original. And since it isn't insulated as well, we're replacing it. It's on, uh, as you said, having, uh, fuses, uh, fuses. Uh, and that has to affect the roof itself, as I mentioned, when they put the mortar and chimney, uh, you can see water. So now, so, so now the roof is deteriorating and the water just soaks right down through and, and it's starting. The building's starting because of the food. So down the road, if we don't take care of these issues, not going to have any cottage at all. So, you know, and my wife wants us to maintain a nice old cottage. We don't want to, we don't lose it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're not trying to, you know, make it any more. Remember, that's not what we're trying to do. But we do have to replace those things, we do have to fix them, for sure.
Uh, what comments amongst yourselves, Mr. Uh... Among staff, anyone has a thought?
Uh, no, only to reiterate that the part of the issue is that had it not been for the delineation of the highest annual tideline, she probably could have applied for just a limited reduction of yard size variance and met those criteria very easily.
And just so I get this clarified, the reason that it kicks to the variance is because of the fact that that seventy-five foot...
Had that pushed her expansion project back closer to the road, which then didn't meet the ten-foot reduction on the roadside or the front side of the cottage, as she had originally planned.
So that's what triggered that. And if that was the case, it would have gone for a limited reduction. It would have been eligible for a limited reduction. I'll make a suggestion, whatever's worth, what's just in the board. I don't think we meet A. The landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. Especially with a neighbor that has an issue. I don't think we can, I don't think we need to. I would think we'd have a better chance pushing this through if you were building backwards toward the road and actually going closer to the road and matching up with more houses. I'd be more comfortable with that than I am with going off to the side. In other words, if I'm going to violate a, a, a part of the property, I'd probably recommend violating toward the back or toward the front of the road as opposed to coming off the side because it's going to have less impact on anybody around, I would imagine. And, uh, I do not believe we can hit A. And with, with a neighbor that's, uh, has an issue with it, I think we have to be a little bit more cautious than if there's not a neighbor that has an issue.
I would say that I probably, uh, under, totally understand the neighbor issue. However, I believe because there's an issue with the pilings and the building, uh, we don't know what all those buildings down in that area are like. The seawater and the winds and just the conditions down there deteriorate buildings extremely fast. And without action on that building, it won't be long and there won't be much there.
I'd have to agree with Jim. The condition of the house is deteriorating and, uh, by past... That explains...
...of that neighborhood and surrounding cottages and houses are all, or most of them are updated.
Yeah, but this is going outside of the current footprint.
Yeah.
And that doesn't, that's what's causing me the problem. If this is just being rebuilt, if they came forward and said, "We want to raise the building, knock it down, rebuild it in the same location," I'd go, "Yeah, no problem, this is easy." No matter what a neighbor would say, because that's really, when you knock a building down, you've actually proven that it's got no value. Uh, so maybe that threshold can be met fairly easily. But now we're talking about an expansion along with that. And that's where I'm having my trouble passing, cannot yield a reasonable return.
So you would be okay with the same footprint if it went up?
As, as, uh, yeah, in past history, we've allowed it to go up. It's been pretty standard position of the board is going up is not a problem, as long as you're staying in the footprint. In this case here, we're asking for it to go outside the footprint on a variance appeal. And I think Mr. Longstaff's right. I mean, from a practical point of view, it really would fall under, if it wasn't for the seventy-five foot setback, it would fall under the limited reduction of yard size, just for the public's knowledge. The requirements are built prior to nineteen ninety-one, which we met. The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties situated in the zoning district. That's a call. "Due to the physical features of the lot or the locations of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size. And the impacts and effects of enlargement, expansion or new building or structure or an existing use of the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirements." And that applicant hasn't started. So the threshold, sad reality is the threshold of a limited reduction is pretty easy. But a variance is not. And we've, that's my challenge.
So if this appeal were to fail, couldn't they come back with that?
They'd come back with a couple of things. They'd come back with expanding up toward the road. That would, that'd be a new, that'd be essentially a new appeal. So they would be able to come back with another triad, a new design. Uh, it may be that the home, and we'll get to in a second, but just, we need to kind of walk through where our heads... And by you hearing where our heads are, maybe it'll help you, help us come to an answer that works and still stay within the state's regulations. We try to be as reasonable as we can with these. The variance appeal is tough. It's just a tough appeal. And when somebody has a problem, it adds to that because we have to be able to defend our position. And so we can't just say, "Oh, we like her, she's nice, give it to her." If her arguments make sense, that's good. We have to be able to justify it at the next level of court if somebody decides to sue. And why did you say, how did you get an A? And what's your logic there, how to defend that position? And that's a hard thing to sell. And that's my concern.
If I can add to that, some of the information that we get as board members, uh, there's legal precedents that's been set in previous court cases. And some of the stuff that we have, and this is on page seventy-three of the zoning board of appeals document that they give us. Um, and it talks about reasonable return and how they come up with that standard and what that really means. And one case that, and this is going to be boring, so I'm really sorry, but, uh, let me get this right. In, it's either in Bailey versus the city of South Portland or in Brooks versus Cumberland Farms. And so it's got to be Bailey versus South Portland. It says, "The typical request for setback variance to allow a deck, porch, garage, storage building or an addition to an existing structure will have to be denied on the basis of the reasonable return standard absent proof that the person has tried to sell the property as is and no one will buy it unless the proposed construction can occur or that that property cannot be used for another legal purpose under the zone ordinance." So that legal precedence is out there. And, and it also comes to state that you don't, you should not be forced to sell your land to get a reasonable return. So there's a balance there. One, one way says you can't, you shouldn't have to sell, the other one says you should try to sell it. So the difficult part from a person that's coming in with an appeal of this type is to prove to us that short of selling this property, I have no choice. And I will never get a reasonable return on that. And that's difficult to prove because really what you could do is say, "Well, I'll just upgrade the, upgrade the condition of the mechanical systems and the structural, structural components and leave it in the same envelope." You have every legal right to do that. And then we'd say, "Okay, it does pass that." But expanding the envelope of almost eleven feet to one side makes it difficult to really pass the straight face test from a board member's standpoint to say, "Yeah, it does, it'll have a reasonable return if they do this." And that's really, it's difficult for us to say that in this case. I don't know if that makes sense or not, or if it helps. Certainly doesn't make it feel any better.
Right.
Well, from practicality, we're both sixty-seven years old. You're trying to not get three stories.
Right.
Talking about three stories in these generations. I know that doesn't mean it's going to be quite...
From a legal standpoint, that's...
I know, but that's exactly why we're trying to do it. And it was very modest at all. And then the use out front for whatever, parking or whatever, it's very difficult to do that. So some, as I said, it's kind of a...
Right.
Now, one of the things here, I don't know whether this will help or not. It says, "Examples of reasonable return." One of them is, "Conformance is possible only at great expense." And that would be going three stories. Because we would have to practically rebuild the whole cottage that's there. Because of the structure, it's not going to support that.
Remember how I said that, um, the view is not something that you have a right to, about the, one of the letters? Well, the opposite of that is the size of your space is limited by what the regulations are. So there's no right to that either. And so you can't, it's that, it's that balancing act that you can't go one way with one thing and another with another. We're trying to be consistent. I think you're sensing from the board, at least three of us at this point, that we have a challenge with, um, the proposal as a design. And I'll be candid, my issue is always the same and for Mr. Longstaff has heard it too much already. He's only been here a few months. I, I wanted to know that when we prove something, we're not going to be in a situation that puts the town at risk for a lawsuit. And so when we get somebody saying they want to do something and nobody cares, I'll be honest. It makes it easier for us to make decisions. When somebody cares, it exposes the town. And would there be a lawsuit? I don't know. But what I do know is that what would be, maybe able to give a little bit more room on the variance, like for instance, I said, "I would argue that if you had to tear the building down and rebuild it, that meets that threshold to me." Well, it doesn't by some case law, I would argue that it does. And if it gets to court, that would be an interesting debate. This debate here, expansion for the sake of expansion, is really, I don't think we can defend that position. And that's my concern. As I've hinted, I mean, I would rather see you come back with a plan that goes out toward the road more and get a variance for that. Because there's likely to be no complaints about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That's not possible because that's not a paved surface where she can...
Can't do it, thank you.
I think she already explained that.
I missed it. Now, thank you very much, Ezio. That's why he's in his role, is, so I can't even offer you that. I, I'm just stuck with this.
And the downside is if we take a vote and it gets voted down, then the project's dead for what, a year?
A year.
And we don't want to do that.
You can, you can rebuild it as it sits. And you can remodel it as it sits, but you couldn't expand it for one year. You have to come back and with a subs, it's described as a substantially different plan that's...
There really is no other plan. If you look at the, if you look at your plot plan there, there is no other place to go. That is, that is what it would be right there, that meets the criteria of everybody.
Board for comments? Mr. Longstaff, if you have any opinions, jump in, feel free.
Is the applicant, so you're willing to reach out to a different architect or a different design group to try and come up with another option for the property as it sits?
I don't know where it would be. As you look at that plot plan, if you can come up with something, I'd love to hear it.
Again, I'm not an expert in architecture, so I can't, I can't help you there. But there are some very innovative people in the Scarborough Town area. We've seen some, them do some amazing things. So... I understand.
So I think maybe a silo or brain elevator?
And I guess for me, the, the, the cost part of it is part of the reasonable return. I think if you didn't have to do any of the work to, to upgrade the cottage in, to current standards, um, I would be a hundred percent agreement with, with the other members here. Because there's a certain, that things you can't do. But because that triggers a need, I believe that a need to do upgrades to begin with than to make it cost effective so that you have a reasonable return on that. That's how I justify the reasonable return part of that. By doing an expansion, it gives you more of a return on that, on that investment that you've made there.
So could I ask one question?
Sure.
So basically, we're saying here that one person that's across the street who has complained, lives across the street, because of all of the other issues that go along with this, even though you can't have a person to say, "It's a view thing," that is, that is triggering to really what you guys have to vote for.
That's a great question. Uh, I'll talk only for me, okay? I'm only speaking for me and how I try to work through the issues when they come to me. A variance appeal is the hardest appeal to me, it hardly ever is met. There are times when even though it's hard to meet, if there's no opposition or there's little challenge to it or it doesn't affect anybody, no one's going to care. And we live in a small town still. So the reality is that sometimes we can say, you know, "I will vote yes to this, although I'm not really comfortable." Or I'll vote no if I'm not really comfortable. That's just me and it's a judgment call. When it's cut and dry, that it doesn't meet the threshold for me personally and there's a potential issue, it, it takes that luxury away for me personally. I, I lose that option. And that's just me personally, that's how I make my decisions. Technically, we should be only following the rules right to the letter, exactly as it's written. And to be candid with you, this doesn't meet that requirement. Doesn't come close. So if I were going to use the definition as it's written, without any emotion in it, I would tell you, it doesn't, don't fill out the application, don't spend the money. But that being said, we try not to work that way. We've been lucky in this town to be able to have some flexibility. I don't know if that answers it or not. I don't know if it gives you the, it's not, there's no good answer from my point of view for you because I'm a no vote. And, but I want you to know that. It's not because I'm trying to be callous or anything else, but that's the logic from my heart where I'm at with it and why.
I see that along your lines, Mark has a, uh, and a father who sees things as Mark is seeing it right now. But if we pass it, he'll challenge it or could challenge it. And it goes to case and comes right back. Goes to some lawyer or judge to rule upon it and then he throws it back to us for facts of finding and all that. I think it's very difficult. I mean, my, I, I think it meets that reasonable return. Mark? Mark? Sorry.
He raises his hand.
But, but that's debatable.
And the good news is all you need is three, three votes. Three is yes, three S's is affirmative. Two is not. Three is yes, three yeses is affirmative, two is not.
In my opinion, again, the question is around, the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. I think without going out and reaching out to see if there are more viable options to work with what little envelope you have, it's difficult for me to answer that question, A, passing the straight face test, saying yes. Because I think there are things that you could do with the property to improve upon its current condition. It may not change the size of the envelope, and that's what you're really reaching out to do, is to try and change the size of the envelope to more closely match the properties in the area. And I understand why you're trying to do that, this is going to be a retirement home, and you want to enjoy it. I think we would all want to do that.
No, it's not going to be a retirement home.
Or-
It's really not, and it's just, we want to make it usable for a portion of the year, that's all it really is.
Okay.
And our kids love coming there, and now that we have a daughter-in-law, and they like to come, I mean, when the kids were young, our upstairs is essentially an attic, and that's where everybody slept. When the kids were young, it was like the wall, "Goodnight, Mom, goodnight, Jeremy, goodnight, Jason, goodnight, Dad." No, from bed to bed, not even separate rooms. Now, the kids are getting married, and you know, they'd like a separate room. (laughing) I wonder why.
Yes.
So, things have changed, not just- it's not just that we're wishing we had that, there are conditions, families are changing, you know.
I think the sad part is that we could blow those. And there are very few places on Higgin Beach that are important. And we don't want it, we want to keep it, we want to keep it with that charm, where we're not going to cheap rock it, we're not going to do all that kind of stuff, we just need some more space in the dining room and place to maybe put a bigger stove. That's really all this little section's going to be. I understand and I appreciate all these things, but from our point of view, we're not- we're not asking for a home that we can live all winter in. We're not, "I have to blow the lines out with compressor and stove underneath here when we go home back to Germany." We're starting to put a really rock and hard place. We just want a basic cottage that still looks like nineteen forty, and is upgraded. And because I, as I said, in the next year, of course, apartment's in the place right now, and I'm really concerned about that.
Yes.
And you consider two-by-fours, a spare to do this kind of thing, and that worries me a lot. So, I don't know where we go. We have to fix that, and then, you don't want to fix something if you're going to have to do something else to it. And as I said, getting- my wife has done a terrific job with this. She's done her plan, she's learned to do this, and she took time to do it, and it's worked extremely hard. And I know you appreciate that, because you can see what she's done.
That's very thorough.
But we're just talking, the higher the architect is going to go, I mean, really. I mean, it's very expensive. And that's not what we want. I mean, an architect can just maybe do something with the third floor, but we know pretty much what we like to do, and we work with a contractor and subcontractors, and I'm sure we could do it. But, again, you guys do have to do what you have to do.
Yeah. I very much empathize with what you're going through, and I would be trying to do the same thing if I were in that position. But I still don't think I have enough information that I can answer that in an affirmative.
So, at this point, you have two choices, we can vote, or if you want to table it, to try and get some more information to help meet the Stolizel's needs, you're welcome to do that. If we vote, two to two is- means it doesn't carry. Three does. And if it fails, that's not the end of the story, you can wait a year and come back, or you can propose a different plan, and we're pretty lenient on what a different plan might be, and bring it back as soon as, not this following period, but the next, and have it reexamined by the board.
And Mr. Chairman, if you came back another night, and we had five members, then it's a three to two vote, and you get three, and it's a win, rather than two, two tie, and it's a loss.
Mm-hmm.
So, how would you like to proceed at this point?
Well, I certainly don't want a no vote, but I don't know what we're going to do.
Yeah, I'm just at loss on how we're going to correct this without a follow-down before we get back here, that's all.
I mean, are you going to be making any moves within the next month?
Making what?
Are you going to be making any moves within the next month? If we were to approve it tonight, would you start as soon as possible?
Yeah, we would get a contractor which we'd talk to and start working with these people and get some better plans drawn up, for professional plans. We did a great job with what you did, and by getting that, yes, we would, and that's what we're waiting to do here.
Will another month kill the project, is really what I'm asking, because you may want to table it until next, I don't know if they can table it until next meeting or not.
Yeah, they can, but choose, but I-
Well, but the one issue that I think is going to be tougher is how we get the footprint out through what is the present kitchen and the bathroom now, how you get what we need for facilities in that area, it would be completely foreign to what we have now.
Yep.
And that's what I'm concerned about, because I'm not sure how you can do that. I just don't know what you can do.
Mr. Longstaff, can I ask a question on the imperious surface? The way the Shoreland Zone rules read, it can be on something that's already impervious surface, or could you replace it? You know, if you took the impervious surface and moved it, would that meet the requirement, or it doesn't meet the requirement?
It's not the Shoreland rules that that-
What's your line?
Shoreland does deal with impervious surface, but what they're talking about is rules within the Dune, Natural Resource Protection Act, within the frontal Dune.
That's the Dune Act?
It's the Dune that's requiring them to, any expansion has to occur on an already impervious surface.
Is there any precedent for moving that impervious surface?
I can't answer that, because I don't regulate that code.
That would have to be done through the state. So, in other words, if they went to the state and said, "Look, what we'd like to do is rip this driveway up, and this actually makes it better if we put it towards the forward of the road," would you work with us on that?
My understanding is that that's not an activity that they would probably likely suggest, because they usually go for no disturbance.
Right.
No additional disturbance, where it's not already impervious, there's no disturbance.
Okay.
That's what we've been told also.
Okay. Well, again, I'll just ask you, would you like to table this or vote?
So, the options are either vote or table, right, at this point?
Right.
I would say table.
Okay, well, if you're going to table for more, the reason why you'd be doing it, so you know, is for more information that you could bring forward to help sway the position. Now, I don't want to, my concern for you is, I don't want to mislead you into thinking that's going to get you anywhere. In other words, just coming back next month, the still- the issues are still there unless you come up with more information that can help sway your argument towards how to meet that condition one. I think A is the only condition that anybody has a problem with, is that fair?
Correct.
Everybody agreed? So, getting kind of off of you of the board that says that we're only troubled with A, which is the minimum standard, and I've vocally stated my position, is everybody else, there's not three votes here, is there? Okay, so, you're hearing that there aren't three votes, so there's no sense. The right thing to do is table at least, to think about presenting something that's getting more information to justify that position. But I don't want to bludgeon you with a false hope that that's tabling that has gone accomplish a lot, it just seems a really high threshold.
But adding another member might be enough to take you over the threshold.
That's true.
So, are we two-two at this point, pretty much?
I would, I'll give you my opinion, I would be voting no right now, if we're to take a vote.
I would be voting yes.
You'd be voting yes?
I'd be voting yes.
So, yeah, I would recommend you postpone. It won't hurt you. We'll bring it back, and it'll be third on the agenda, I believe, next month.
So, do I have to reapply and all that kind of thing, or is it automatic, or?
Just go in tomorrow and talk with the office, and they'll kind of help you through with the process.
Okay.
Okay, you don't have to go through a whole bunch, but-
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to move the table as regards to the board.
Seconded?
On paper? It's tabled.
Thank you for your opinions, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you for courtesy, I'm sorry to be so blunt.
Yeah, there we can look.
Appeal number twenty-five oh eight, limited reduction of yard size by King Weinstein, ninety-six East Grand Avenue, this is map U twenty-three, possible seventy-six, we expect a third story, twelve point five feet from the side property line, and are for A zone. And again, the same issues with Attorney Haydom. I'm assuming that the position stays the same in this issue. The board okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Haydom?
For the record, Attorney Peter Haydom, representing the applicant, King Weinstein, owner of ninety-six East Grand Avenue in Scarborough. This is a limited reduction of yard size appeal, fairly straightforward. Mr. Weinstein is looking to put a, as of right, third story on his home in ninety-six East Grand Avenue in Scarborough. What he's requesting specifically is a two-point-five foot decrease in the side yard setback. It presently exists on the property at that particular location, the present wall on the, as you're facing it from the road, the left side of the house is exactly twelve and a half feet, where fifteen feet is required. He has the required yard setbacks, side yard setbacks on three sides. This particular wall was constructed over forty years ago, in nineteen seventy-one, and you have two submissions that shows the measurement, twelve and a half feet from the present side yard setback. He's also submitted architect drawings for the plans that he, for the existing story that he'd like, stories that he'd like to construct. We believe that the application complies with zone ordinance section five B five, the five conditions that have been discussed earlier tonight. Specifically, the existing homes and additions were erected prior to July third, nineteen ninety-one, nineteen seventy-one, as I stated earlier. The reduction, requested reduction is necessary to allow expansion in keeping with the scale of the surrounding wall of homes, to allow a smooth wall to go up. He would be allowed as of right to jog in two and a half feet and stall this without the reduction of yard size, but that would add both unnecessary expense and look kind of strange, both aesthetically and architecturally. In the neighborhood, it's out on Pipe Point, homes of this scale are common up and down on both sides of the home that he's proposing to improve. Number three, the requested reduction is necessary to build an appropriately sized, structurally sound additional story without doing that job for no essential reason, and for allowing the use of existing wall and foundation for a smooth wall and improvement. Quite frankly, many other towns allow this as of right, but in this particular case, again, this was flagged as he was drawing his plans. The impact, number four, the impacts and effects of the granting of the application will not increase the impact on the neighborhood, it will remain in character with essentially everything that's around there. And the last criteria, obviously, this is a building permit application flagging of this issue, even before I think they even talked to staff. Construction on the proposed addition is not commenced. There was an additional issue that Mr. Longstaff had flagged in terms of setback from, I think it's the high watermark. I did submit an additional, I don't want to misphrase it, but the point is, I submitted something that we believe shows that that is not an issue in this case, the seventy-five foot setback. I didn't hear back from Mr. Longstaff, he just submitted a couple of days ago, I just wanted to confirm the board does have that information, and ask if there's any other concerns on that particular issue. I did hear from my client this evening that the DEP has issued, it was not, a permit not required, has issued a permit not required binding. So, if the board had any questions about that issue, that's been addressed. And at this point, I would request that the board grant the application, and we're happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Longstaff.
This is the revised plan that was sent in, I didn't bother to try to get it to you guys, because it was so close to the date of the hearing, so I just made a copy. But the issue is the Shoreland setback, again, the highest annual tide line, and there's your seventy-five foot setback, the structure is clear back here, so the thirty percent expansion does not play into this proposal.
Okay, so we don't have to deal with any of those issues?
You don't have to deal with those issues, however, we don't have a height on the structure, so we don't know if that's compliant or not.
The limit for the height is thirty-five?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet to the mid?
To the midpoint of the roof, taken on the-
There should have been a plan that was submitted that showed one of-
There was a plan, but it only showed the height of the addition, it didn't give the total height of the structure.
It's a, do you want us to-
It would be a building permit issue at that point, but it would be nice for the board to know whether or not it's going to meet that.
King Weinstein, applicant, we did go over the plans in depth with the prior building inspector, Dave Chris, and that was one of the concerns, we went over it, and it did meet all the requirements of the architect at that time.
I don't see the in-law apartment, or the accessory apartment that you come for approval back a while ago, did you never do that? Did you never put the accessory unit in?
Well, it's constructed, it's an adjacent structure.
Oh, it's a different structure.
Garage, yeah.
That's the one that's labeled as garage?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And just a note, Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, as a note, follow-up on that, I believe the condition of that accessory approval was that Mr. Weinstein made this, made this location his residence.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
And I note that on the application, it is not listed as his residence. His residence is listed in Old Orchard Beach.
I believe it's a one-ninety-six Paco address, and that's Mr. Weinstein's office. But his, I mean, driver's license, whenever we need, car registrations, he's a resident of Scarborough.
It really has no bearing on this appeal, other than he, if he's not currently residing there, he is in a state of nonconformance with regard to that one.
I understand that, but we're representing him, Mr. Weinstein's happy to testify that he is, he's a legal resident of Scarborough. We're well aware of that provision, we had the approval in the two thousand and six, five, whatever.
Right. Mr. Weinstein, could you stand up, please, and take them off? I'm the one that actually brought that point to you back then, I said, "Be careful, because it might bite you." So, you're stating, at this point, that you are, if this is your primary residence, you continue to live at this location?
Yes.
Okay. And this is, in essence, you're testifying, subject to violations of perjury, I just want to make sure you know that you're telling the truth, I don't want to put you on the spot, so I don't want to make it awkward, because, and the reason I'm asking is because I had some information, I thought that was in here, that didn't say that you were currently living there, and I just want to make sure you're okay with that, just because I don't want to cause a problem for you. Not an accusation, nothing more than just a defensive play from me to-
That's fine.
Okay, so, as far as, that's your own address, and you can, and again, if you're not living there, and you're not using the accessory unit, then it doesn't matter. But if you're using-
What's it?
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, let's, do we have any letters on this one?
We do not.
And any phone calls, nothing? Am I open to public, if anybody wants to speak to this issue? Go ahead, take the microphones, state your name.
I have a handout, sorry. After me.
Okay, thank you. This is a lot of material for being brought to the table, is there a reason, Ms.?
Daggett, I'm Sally Daggett, I'm here on behalf of Peter and Stephen Gross, the owners of Beach Realty Trust, and the reason this is delayed is because actually, the notice that was sent to Mr. Gross in Massachusetts, was sent by the town of Scarborough without any postage, so then it came back to Scarborough Town Hall, and it wasn't received until late last week. So, I hope you will all understand the reason for the lateness of this submission, it's really just a two-page letter with some attachments that I think are some things you've probably seen before. Again, I'm here on behalf of the Gross Brothers, who are the trustees of Beach Realty Trust, and if you look at the letter with the handouts attached, I just presented to you, if you look at Exhibit One, which is a GIS aerial photo, you can see the location of my client's property in relation to Mr. Weinstein's house.
You've only got how many- You've only got how many copies do we have here?
We should.
That Carol doesn't have.
Are there enough, I have more copies if you need.
Yeah, that would be great if we could have a little more. I guess so.
Is there any of a copy now?
Let's have a chance to kind of decipher this, okay? I don't like getting surprises, to be honest with you, and I appreciate that...
My clients don't either, so...
Are you aware this is not a variance appeal?
Well, that's one of the items I would like to discuss with the Board.
Mr. Chair, can I recommend we take a ten-minute recess? We have a chance to review this.
Sure. We'll recess and come back at nine twenty-five.
There are, I saw at least one other gentleman come up here. Frankly, I'm not opposed generically to the motion to table, but I'd like to hear the presentation that the abuser, whoever, whomever the Attorney Daggett represents, as well as the other gentleman that wanted to get up here and speak. I mean, we're all here tonight, let's move forward as much as we possibly can. Maybe some of the issues we can clarify. I see Mr. Longstaff reading furiously through some of the regulations, but at least I'd like to see, put more of the issues on the table for the next return, if we're going to go that route.
I have no problem with that.
Fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Daggett, why don't we let you ahead and take the microphone, and we'll discuss your concerns.
Thank you. Again, Sally Daggett, on behalf of Peter and Stephen Gross of Beach Realty Trust. The Grosses are objects to the proposed, and we believe that this is in fact a variance in order to allow the property owner to construct a third story addition into the side yard setback for two reasons. Reason number one, the house is clearly located in the shoreline overlay zone, so it must comply with all of the provisions of the shoreline zoning ordinance, and under your shoreline zoning ordinance, there is no limited side yard setback standard, and this is a variance. The applicant is requesting to be two and a half feet into the setback, closer than permissible under the R4A zoning district. I think you can, there's no question from the applicant's plot plan or site plan that while the house isn't within seventy-five feet of, whether it's the high watermark, or I haven't seen this new plan, I guess just apparently got submitted, whatever mark the town of Scarborough is using, the house is very clearly within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of, within the shoreline zone, and so for that reason, it's the undue hardship test in the shoreline zoning ordinance that applies. This limited side yard provision doesn't apply. When there's a more restrictive provision, your shoreline zoning ordinance specifically says the more restrictive provision applies. That means it's the undue hardship test. It's a very difficult test, as you know from the appeal you just heard tonight, right before this appeal. It's a very, the four-part undue hardship test is very difficult to meet, and the planning, or the property owner hasn't even applied under that standard, and they can't meet the four undue hardship standards. They already have a reasonable return on the property. They already have a good-sized two-story house on the property, plus they have a garage with a accessory dwelling unit on the property. It's not a hardship to build the house, whether they jag in two and a half feet. This is just for aesthetic reasons and for architecturally pleasing reasons, but that's not what the undue hardship test is about. This request for the two-and-a-half-foot variance is for the owner's convenience. The second part of the four-part undue hardship test is, are there any unique circumstances of the property that justify the variance? And there are no unique circumstances that justify this request, and we believe the variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. There are not lots of, or to our knowledge, any other three-story homes in the neighborhood. If you look at exhibit number three, which is a sort of panoramic photograph that's taken standing on the beach, looking to the left towards Old Orchard and to the right up behind Point, and you can see all the houses there on the beach are not three-story houses. They're one- or two-story houses. So we believe this will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So that's reason number one, why the Grosses are opposed to this variance request. Reason number two is that even if you believe that the undue hardship test doesn't apply, which we think would be an error of law and would be overturned in court, to the extent the Board finds that it's just this limited yard size test that's in the zoning ordinance that applies, we don't believe that the property owner meets even that test. If you turn to the ordinance provisions, which are on page twenty-nine of the ordinance, there are five separate criteria. We're not fussing about criteria number one or criteria number five, but we are fussing about criteria number two, three, and four. With regard to criteria number two, the requested setback reduction is not reasonably necessary to permit the owner-occupant to use and enjoy the property in the same manner as other similar properties in the zoning district. The owner-occupant is already using the property, both the house and the garage with the accessory dwelling unit for residential purposes, just like the similar properties in the neighborhood. With regard to the third criteria under section five B five A of the zoning ordinance, there's nothing about the physical features of this lot or the location of the house that makes it impractical, construct the proposed expansion in conformance with the currently applicable fifteen-foot setback. The applicant has admitted that he can jag in two and a half feet, but that again, he thinks that's displeasing both architecturally and aesthetically. Well, displeasing architecture and aesthetics, those aren't the tests under the ordinance. With regard to criteria number four under the zoning ordinance, the impact of this third story addition to the house, we believe will be substantially different or greater than the impacts or effects of a house that does conform to the yard size requirements. And the three stories, three-story height is just not typical for the neighborhood. If you look at the photographs that have been attached to my letter, exhibit number four, this is, these are two photographs, the view of the existing two-story house on the property, and my client's property is the one, as you're looking from the beach, it's immediately adjacent to the house, but set back a little bit. It's the low-lying one-story house, set back, again, immediately to the right of the Weinstein house. So that's the, and if you turn to exhibit number five, this is a view of my client's front porch. towards the beach, towards the ocean, and you can see the house, uh, right in front of the White House. That is, um, a neighbor's property, but it's the Brown house to the right. That is the two-story house that, uh, is owned by Mr. Weinstein. So for those reasons, the grocers object to this proposed variance and we believe it is the variance request and that's why we believe that the four-part undue hardship test applies. And we do also have some questions about the proposal. Uh, we can't tell what the height of this proposed structure is from the plans that were submitted, so we would like to know what the height of the, um, structure is. Um, and we believe also, and I know the board has said this isn't really its issue, but the board brought the issue up. We do not believe that this property is being used by Mr. Weinstein as his residence. He's not either living in the house or in the accessory dwelling unit. Um, their chronology from, and I think it's only Mr. Maroon who was here back in, um, two thousand and six, I think it was, that we were all here. If I can just find my chronology, excuse me, in December of two thousand and five, that's when this board gave an approval, uh, to Mr. Weinstein to build a second story on the garage structure on the property. If you look at our exhibit number one, you can see, uh, it's labeled as ADU. That was, it used to be a one-story garage and in December of two thousand and five, this board approved, um, allowing Mr. Weinstein to build a second story on that garage where there's now an accessory dwelling unit. But one of the conditions of the approval was that Mr. Weinstein had to live in either the accessory dwelling unit or in the house. And at the time, Mr. Weinstein didn't live there and so he had to do some shuffling. And, um, when he applied for the building permit, he, in two thousand and six, he still yet didn't have a legal address in Scarborough. But then when he applied for a certificate of occupancy, uh, in January of two thousand and eight, he finally had actually changed his voter registration from Old Orchard Beach to Scarborough. And then the certificate of occupancy issued, that was in January of two thousand and eight. Well then, sure enough, in September, oh, excuse me, October twenty-ninth of two thousand and eight, so, uh, nine months after he got his certificate of occupancy, he changed his voter registration back to Old Orchard Beach. And I confirmed the same with Tody Justice, the town clerk, on Thursday of last week. And I have here a printout, I apologize, I didn't realize this issue would be coming up tonight. But, um, here is Mr. Weinstein's, um, voter registration information and it shows his residence address is five Sunset Drive, unit number twelve in Old Orchard Beach. Again, we understand this is maybe-
I'm not sure why that's relevant.
I guess the board brought it up and you even questioned Mr. Weinstein about whether he was a resident of Scarborough. And I'm just saying, there is information out there and I would like to submit this to the board. I apologize, I only have one copy, but, um, it clearly shows he is currently registered to vote in Old Orchard Beach. And I guess we would ask that the code enforcement office follow up on this issue. I understand it may not be the Board of Appeals' issue, but we think, um, it's significant that there's a history here of saying one thing and then doing another. So, thank you very much.
Any other comments or issues?
Unless the board members have any questions, um, please respond.
We'll hold off on the questions, I think, but-
Okay.
There's another gentleman that wishes to speak. So you can state your name and address, we'll go from there.
Altobias, Grand Beach LLC, which is eleven, Eleventh Street. The abutter to the applicant, direct abutter.
Uh, that would be, is that the White House?
Yes, the oceanfront.
Traditional, it's a traditional kind of a, um-
Eighteen ninety cottage. Summer use only. Uh, just, uh, I've got some, the sketchy drawings and I've already talked to, uh, Mr. Longstaff on several occasions and got most of my questions answered. Uh, just one lately was the, uh, I was concerned, looking over the drawings that I had, which wasn't a complete set, was there is a porch to the ocean side of, uh, the applicant's house. And I was just wondering if that was going to be enclosed in, even though it's, even with the house. You know what I'm saying?
Are you referencing the porch closest to your property?
Yes. So if he's going up the third story, would that, like, go out to that? Is that allowed? You know, I guess he's basically following the footprint, but I couldn't, I don't have any other drawings to know that that's part of the enclosed house. That's all I have.
Um, thank you. I'm stating, I don't know if you know the answer to that or not. Yeah, anybody else wish to speak on the public issue here? So I'm gonna close the public hearing part, thank you.
Yes, that issue has a deck on the ocean side that will stay as it is.
Okay, so it'll still be in that-
Yeah, the other floor will be directly over the existing footprint of the exterior walls of the building. That will just be an outside deck as is.
Does that clarify that?
And that is the point. I mean, we're trying to go up in the existing footprint and not have it jog out. That is the issue that's in front of you. I'm all offended because it's clear that the, um, uh, the Attorney Daggett's clients had wind of this way before, five minutes ago, when we, or twenty minutes ago, when we got this, uh, uh, documentation. And it would've been helpful, uh, to have at least seen it even this afternoon and I probably could've researched some of this issue on whether there should be a variance or not. I mean, uh, they set up a straw man argument and then knocked it down. This is within two hundred and fifty feet, ergo, it's gotta be a variance rather than a limited reduction in yard size. That has been not, that hasn't been flagged today. Um, that is the only issue. The issue is not third story or not. The issue is, does the third story under, under the application that we put forth in front of this board should be over two and a half feet or not? That's the only, that's the only issue here. It's, it's, there is a right to do the, uh, the third story under our view of this. Um, and that's all I can respond to right now because I was just handed this half an hour ago.
Thank you. Um, and based on those statements, exactly how I feel, I think we need to table this, um, till the next meeting. And so I'll move to table.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. This will be tabled till the next meeting. Just for record's sake, for clarification, you know, for, uh, the reason for the table is because of the information we need to get. Also, the applicant's gotta write the information. All right, so the next appeal is appeal number twenty-five oh nine, it's a variance appeal by Cynthia and Mark King, eighty-one Jones Creek Road, assistance map U twenty-one, lot eight diva, to elevate and renovate a home with non-conforming setbacks on the front side and rear in the R four A zone. And, uh, representative?
Good evening, members of the, uh, zoning board of appeal. My name is Tom Blackman, I'm here on behalf of Mark and Cynthia King. Uh, they per, they are a, um, they're the owners of a cottage at eighty-one Jones Creek Road. And what they are doing is, and the existing condition of the property is that it is below the current floodplain elevation, the finished floor elevation is nine point eight feet, which, uh, is, is non, is in non-compliance with Scarborough's code. And they, under the existing floodplain, under the proposed FEMA flood maps, it would be substantially, uh, non-compliant. And so what they're seeking is the, um, the ability to elevate the house so to make it, uh, compliant with the new, uh, with the existing floodplain as well as the new proposed FEMA floodplain.
Okay, and so it, again, they're planning to raise the property and then rebuild it?
It just, well, all they're gonna do is just go straight up and they're gonna add a bathroom within the enclosed porch in the back. So there's no expansion of the footprint. The only expansion would be the stairs necessary to access the property.
And they, those are, are they forward of the, of the, um-
No, they're not.
They're in the backside. So you're basically just taking the exact footprint you've got, removing the house, putting a new home in place-
Putting a new foundation, just goes-
Meeting all the codes that are required for, uh, shoreline zone and-
No, they're all free compliance.
You're all free that, you're all clear of that. So this is triggering variance, why? This is a variance-
This is a variance because the way our ordinance reads, and I put that in the summary that you all have in your packet, that, uh, section three C one of the Scarborough zoning ordinance states that no building or structure which is non-conforming with respect to space and bulk requirements of this ordinance may be expanded, enlarged, or increased in height unless such expanded or enlarged portion complies with the space and bulk requirements of this ordinance or the Board of Appeals grants relief from such requirements by variance under section B E B three, or five B three, excuse me. Um, so, so it's kinda like you've got to raise the structure to comply, but now you have to go ask permission to raise the structure to comply.
Makes sense.
That's the juxtaposition, I guess. I don't know if that's the proper use of that term, but, uh, that's kinda where we find ourselves. It's really a, kind of a hiccup in our ordinance, which I hope to correct sometime in the next few years so that we don't have to do this again, but, uh-
All right, so, do you have any letters on this?
We do not.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this one? Just feel free to take the microphone, state your name and address and we'll go from there.
My name's Tom Bartels, I'm at Fourteen Avenue Five and I'm a direct abutter on the rear-
Could you spell your last name first, please, sir?
B A R T E L S.
Just as it sounds, okay.
Um, my only, I only have one question and it's probably quite evident. Um, there's a shed in the back there and I assume that shed will stay in the same spot. Um, I, the shed is actually there, um, I've been with the town for years. Uh, the shed is actually, was not put there by permit. Um, and, uh, I just wanna make sure that that won't be touched.
That won't be touched, sir.
Right.
Uh, would you like to take, say, just, just, please? So you're talking wood, there's, there's a wood platform and then the shed's in the middle there?
It's my understanding none of those things will change, um.
Is that the right answer? No, is that for blunt?
I'm, I'm not sure. Are you seeking, are you seeking that it be moved or?
No, I mean, uh-
I mean, like opening up another can of worms, see, that shed, uh, was placed there illegally about five years ago. Uh, I checked with the assessor, there's, since nineteen twenty-five, there's been no recording of a shed there. So I'm making sure that that shed, that in my estimation is illegal, stays where it is, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
It's my, it's my understanding that, that they have no intention of, uh, changing anything, but I, uh, changing the location of the shed or there's a wooden deck. But on the other hand, I, I do not want to represent that, that they may wanna remove that shed at some point. I mean, they bought it, they bought the property as is. And I'm not sure what their plans with respect to that are.
I'm very good, I'm, I'm glad that the issue's brought forward. I mean, in this proposal here, it's strictly saying as, we're only talking about the, the structure itself.
Exactly.
So it, uh, the other issue, uh, can be dealt outside the board. Okay? You're welcome. So no more else from the public? I'll close the public hearing. Come back, um, this, in my opinion, is a little bit easier variance. And this is a classic example of the variance appeal. Um, why don't we go through the requirements of that and, um, the first one, the landed question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. And if you'd like to take your position on that.
That's true.
And explain why, please?
Uh, well, if, if the, if the property is not allowed to be elevated and we were to experience a flood and, uh, under the proposed, uh, flood maps, it would be about five feet underwater. So that in itself, I believe, would render the property, uh, of no value or limited value.
Okay.
And also, it's my understanding that under the current, um, under the proposed FEMA regulations, if you do not meet these proposed regulations when they become effective, there's a, there's a substantial penalty that is implied, um, each year as a surcharge to your flood insurance premium, which would adversely affect their, um, value of their property.
I'm sure there's no coincidence there either. Uh, okay, number two, and these are the variances due to the unique circumstance of the property and not due to the general conditions in the neighborhood?
Yeah, the property is, is, as it is when they acquired it, uh, it was built in the nineteen twenties. It is basically was below, uh, the front of the house is actually below grade at this point, so, uh-
Uh, the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or locality?
Uh, there's been a number of houses, uh, surrounding this property that have been elevated and it's, we're just, uh, complying with the, uh, with the Scarborough code.
And the hardship is not a result of the applicant or prior owner?
No.
All right, um, back to the board for questions, comments, or a motion.
Well, I don't, with, with no footprints change or anything, I don't see any reason we would have to question this.
It seems pretty straightforward to me.
Move to approve appeal twenty-five oh nine.
Second. Discussion on the motion? None, all in favor? unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next appeal is the appeal number twenty-five ten. It's a reapproval of a variance appeal that's Patrick Dimick, uh, Three Shipwreck Road. Assistance map U one parcel eighty-three to demolish and reconstruct the home. Twelve feet, six inches from the front property line, zero feet from the property line, in the side property line. In the R four zone. And, uh- Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions. I'm here this evening representing Mr. Dimick. Um, you may recall that we were here not so long ago, uh, back in July, when we got a unanimous approval for the variance for this particular project. The variance we're seeking is a, um, a reconstruction of a house in its exact same footprint on the lot where it is right now. Uh, you may also recall that we were not able to move that house even if we wanted to because the DEP's regulator, the state's regulations basically say that, sorry, you can't do that. You can build in the same footprint or rebuild in the same footprint, but you cannot expand it horizontally. There is a thirty percent planned expansion to this, uh, uh, structure, which will be about a third of the second floor. Uh, and other than that, everything is exactly the same as you would see it now. But here, just because the original construction schedule, which was, was out, started as far back as this past early summer, uh, had originally intended to have all the various contractors and subcontractors that are typically needed in something of this caliber, plus a pile driver, which is a little bit more of a challenge to, uh, to get out at sites, so I understand. Uh, was scheduled for late October. Uh, we were contacted, uh, in late, very late October, right around Halloween, actually, um, and, uh, by Mr. Dimick, who's, was in a bit of a panic. He doesn't understand these types of, of, this industry as an overall and said, "My contractors have told me that they cannot coordinate their schedules now until the middle of January." We're here a little bit earlier than that because we wanted to make sure that the, our approval actually expires, uh, on January ninth and we wanted to make sure that we had enough time to be able to just extend that, uh, for another six-month period. Uh, the schedule is currently scheduled to, uh, to start in January, in the middle of January. Who really knows? But, uh, he apparently did read the riot, riot act to his contractors and said, "A few weeks is one thing, three months is another, I need to start this process." Toward that end, we're just asking for an extension of the approval that we already received.
Thank you. Mr. Longstaff, anything to add? No. I'll open the public hearing, anybody wish to speak on this issue? Close the public hearing, but this is really straightforward, um, if I have a motion, uh, just extend?
Prove appeal twenty-five ten as presented.
Seconding.
Oh, any discussion, motion? Any on all favor? It's extended. Now, it's extended from, Mr. Longstaff, is that extended from this date or from January date?
I think it would be January.
That was my understanding.
I just wanna make sure I confirmed it, just in case.
It's a good question, but I think it's changed.
In case she doesn't have luck with this.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. Well, I hope it'll be better this time around. By the way, the speed limit is twenty miles an hour there. That hurts.
And the next appeal is appeal number twenty-five eleven. It's a variance appeal by- And next appeal is appeal number twenty-five eleven, it's a variance appeal by Anita Pellet, twenty-one Massacre Lane, assistance map U seventeen parcel eighteen to relocate and renovate a home one foot from the rear property line, zero feet from the sideline, and thirteen feet from the front property line in the R two zone.
Welcome.
Hi, uh, my name's Trevor Watson, for Ider Investments, I represent the Pellets, uh, so not only is this a variance appeal, um, but I also have some surprise documentation. As they're willing to see updated drawings.
Sure.
Should we jiggle Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are these very consistent with...
They are consistent, uh, pardon. They are consistent in, in footprint and size and sort of division of, of inner space. Some, some of the interior partitions have changed, and there's a slight change on the second story, which went from a enclosed structure to an open porch.
Okay.
So the, uh, the Pellets are looking for variance to, let me move this, looking for a variance to, uh, similar to the previous, uh, proposal, there's a, a good, a significant portion of the existing Pellet house is not currently on the property. And so the Pellets are looking to demolish, uh, the existing structure and are proposing to build a new structure that is, uh, uh, smaller in footprint and increases the setbacks. Um, so we're, we're looking to, uh, reduce the, the coverage from thirty-four point three percent, which has existed, to thirty percent, and we're looking to increase the front yard setbacks from, uh, roughly, uh, ten point eight feet to thirteen feet, uh, the rear yard setback from, uh, negative to one foot, and the side yard setback from negative to zero. Um, the lot is pretty tough in that it's very small and there's no, uh, legal building envelope on it, the front yard setback and the rear yard setback overlap, so, um, uh, that's, that's the summary.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, we've got the letters on this, so...
Oh, I have an email, too.
Thank you. Okay. This is from George, uh, George Belshaw. Uh, Trevor, we do not object to the placement of the house as long as the ground level is consistent with the butters and is of porous material like sand or gravel. The drawings do not indicate, I'm sorry, drawings do not include any placement of utilities, exhaust fans, or other interior placed appliances. Please provide us with that information.
We have the address on that, Mr. ...
Uh, this is, uh, I haven't found it yet.
It's, uh, twenty-two Garrison Lane.
Thank you.
Uh, Ider and its subcontractors will need access to our property at twenty-two Garrison Lane for construction purposes. Please provide us with insurance and state's coverage of our property from any damage, negligence resulting from the work performed on twenty-one Massacre Lane.
Should've blacked out most of that.
And that's, uh, you understand that to be accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. I've since responded to Mr. Belshaw and, uh, answered his questions.
Okay. And this looks like a second one from, is that, uh...
Oh, it may be a redundancy.
It's the same one. Um, this one here is from Alex Smith, uh... I don't see an address on this one, but I'll read it.
She's twenty-five Massacre Lane?
Twenty-five, okay. I approve Anita Pellet's project. I am her mother, Alexander White Smith, and I, she got the right answer. And I sold her part of my property, which abuts her land. If there's a problem before her hearing on December eleventh, please call me at, uh, thank you, Alexandra Smith. She'll still be invited to Christmas parties, I hope so. The next one is, um, from twenty-seven Massacre Lane, Meredith Webster. I'm writing you this brief note today in support of Anita Pellet's, um, my immediate neighbor on Massacre Lane. I'm thrilled that they are renovating and improving that house as it will enhance the neighborhood and make things nicer for all of us. I would ask you extend to them every courtesy possible to have the construction go forward quickly as possible. I'm thrilled to have my adjacent houses cared for and attractive, it makes it better for everyone, Meredith Webster. And the last one is, uh, from Bev McGraw, um, this is from sixty-eight Sulky Lane. Uh, thank you for the notice. I'll not be able to attend the public hearing on December eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, so I'm writing my objections to you for consideration. I oppose the variance as stated, there's absolutely no justification for bringing a building to be placed one foot from the proper, rear property line, nor zero feet from the east sideline. Additionally, the Pellets have shown disregard for the correct east sideline by placing live rocks and bushes actually in the roadway. Is my concern that they will attempt to pass that off as their own east line, not so. I have a survey map and would be willing to share it with you. Original marker's in the front right of my property and was placed there when my grandfather built my cottage in the very early nineteen hundreds. Please keep me informed as to the appeal. Uh, Beverly McGraw, twenty Massacre Lane. Okay. Now, I'll open the public hearing, anybody from the public wants to speak on this? And nobody else from the public hearing? Okay, so this is a variance appeal. Still have anything to add on this one? Sorry. Thinking of long talk for this.
Um, I don't really have anything, uh, further to add, other than, you know, what's included in the summary. It's again, one of the, I don't know what Ider does to, to inherit these, these, uh, these problems, but this is another ridiculous lot that the building isn't even on, and they're trying to move it back onto the lot, reduce it, and reduce the non-conformance and get it all on the property where, where, where it should've been. Um, you know, again, I, I don't know how you, I don't know how you view hardship in a case of this, but it's, it's like, there's no win here, there's no way to win with this, other than, I guess the win is it finally gets to be put on the property where it should be, not in a building envelope, because there is no building envelope.
You know how difficult this variance, the A question on variance is to say yes to? This is perfectly, a perfect example of why we need it. Because how can you yield a reasonable return with a structure that goes on another property? And he's bringing it back on to the existing property line. I mean, that's, that's really why you do that, in my opinion. That's, this is a perfect example of how you use this.
I think that that's probably the only way you can look at it, is if they went to sell it, the appraisal and, and would, and discovery would say, "It's not on its own property, therefore you cannot sell something that you don't own."
You've lost serious value by doing that, exactly.
So I guess that, in, yeah, I guess that's one way to look at that hardship.
Yeah.
One question for you on the, on the setbacks.
Sure.
Are you including the eaves on that one foot? Or are you, is that...
Yes.
So it's, so really you're gonna have, like, a foot?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's signi, yeah, it's more.
Okay.
And can I, should I, can I answer? I think Mrs. McGraw is mistaken. Can I answer that?
The, uh...
The one letter?
Sure.
Do I need to, okay, so...
You just don't know if you have to, but feel free.
Uh, so she, she mentioned, she's, uh, she's across the street, so the rear setback impacts Mr. Belsh, George Belshaw, who spoke in favor of it. Uh, the side yard setback impacts Mrs. Smith and, um, uh, uh, what's the, Meredith Webster, and they both spoke in favor of it. And, uh, we're actually increasing the front yard setback, which most directly impacts Mrs. McGraw, from ten point eight six feet to thirteen feet, as proven by the survey. And I think she's also mistaken as to the road designation in the, in, in her understanding of it. Uh, if you look at the, if you look at the front, if you look at the first page, you can see Massacre Lane, you can see the property line, and there's a thin line there that, that's the driveway cut out, and then it, it's, it's held on to the property of the Pellets, and that, that line actually designates the driveway, uh, sorry, the road, Massacre Lane.
Thank you. Why don't we go through the requirements for variance and, uh, start with, uh, the landed question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted.
Sure, so this is not, this is a couple, a couple of different elements here. Um, a lot of the mechanicals of the structure are below the, of the house are below the first floor and in the floodplain. Um, so, a-again, we're talking about a substandard structure that's, uh, supported, uh, on piers, on wooden piers, on flat stones, on wooden piers, on ground, um, uh, you know, the, it's, it's falling into a state of disrepair, the, the floors are, are very uneven, the, there's a significant elevation change in the floors of eight inches, uh, throughout the house, as shown on the elevation certificate, so... And additionally, uh, you guys have already touched on it, uh, sort of the, the non-conformity of this structure and the fact that the house doesn't exist entirely on its property makes, um, you know, clouds the title and makes resale a, a real nightmare. And, uh, it, it really reduces the marketability of, of the property. So, um, you know, and just finally, you know, the limited ability to make, uh, significant improvements to the structure that's not on their property.
Uh, the needs of the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood?
Uh, that's cor, that's correct. The property, again, is six, you know, six thousand plus square feet, it's small, there's no legal building envelope. It's, uh, the, you know, the, the property is unique.
Uh, the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality?
Uh, that's correct, because we're bringing, you know, we're bringing the structure entirely on to the property and we're updating the structures. We're gonna, you know, modernize it, current codes, life safety issues.
And the hardship is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
That's right. The, the house was built, uh, prior to the, um, road width requirements and the, you know, current Scarborough zoning ordinance that were enacted.
Thank you. Um, to me, this is pretty straightforward, this is another example of, of a variance for, not much to, to me, I just agree. Um, comments, questions, or a motion?
I approve twenty-five eleven, as presented.
Seconded.
Discussion on the motion? Say none, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One thing I did notice on the, uh, agenda that we had...
I'm sorry, what's that?
Uh, on the, excuse me, on the agenda that we had for the, this evening?
Yes.
There were two appeals numbered twenty-five oh nine. You've hit, okay, thank you. Carol, thank you for...
He's always on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
But the numbers don't really matter.
We didn't get the memo.
(laughing). Um, Mr. Longstaff, anything to add for tonight? Comments?
Uh, no, other than, if you know of anyone who would like to apply for the position of chairman, I think we need, or, the chairman, uh, Carol, or just zoning board in general.
Zoning board in general?
Zoning board in general, because I do believe you are correct that your term is going to expire.
Yeah.
And, um, but we would, I think, if the board pleases, maybe entertain a, uh, an indication for me if you would continue until a replacement is found, uh, would be...
I'm, I'm fine to stay as long as...
On what date does, uh, does the chairman terminate?
Nice way to say it. You're gonna enjoy this one tomorrow.
I, I don't know the exact date of when the term expires. I didn't get that information, but I did hear from To, I did see an email from Toady Justice, the town clerk, that, um...
Should be January.
Should be January.
Something.
That's all I have.
Like eggs. Um, uh, rough meeting night tonight, uh, a lot of tough items, so, uh, thank you everybody for the courtesy, appreciate your courtesy, um... (laughing) How good for you, man. Any other comments from the board or a motion to close, adjourned?
Wish you all happy holidays.
Yes.
You too.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All in favor? Unanimous, we're adjourned. Have a nice night.